With that. Good evening, everyone. Today is January 28th, 2025. It is 6:01 PM. We are at Cape Canaveral City Council Special Meeting, City Hall Council Chambers, 100 Polk Avenue in Cape Canaveral, Florida. I call this meeting to order. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, would you please lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis.
For, I mean here, sorry.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here.
And Councilmember Willis.
Here.
You have a call.
Counsel, thank you all for being here and want to thank the public and all who are participating live streaming online. Thank you for being a part of this meeting. This time, counsel, approval of agenda as written or with amendments. Are there any changes? We have one item. We're going to do public participation first, and then one item for consideration, and it is to adjourn. There's no reports or anything on the meeting, so if we intend to make any changes or additions.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
I will second that motion.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, second by Councilmember Jackson, to approve the agenda as written. Any further discussion? City Clerk?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson, four. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
And Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Okay, unanimous.
Agenda stays as written. Thank you. Before we go to public participation, have a question for our city attorney. The public comment cards, are they limited to the items tonight? I've got a scenario with two cards. One of them is not related to the item tonight, the other is. Just want to make sure.
I mean, it's a special meeting, and there's one purpose, so typically it's public comments limited to what's on the agenda. But of course, the council can choose to entertain any other comments. Your prerogative.
The first card I have is Mr. John Benton. John, if you're here, you have submitted two cards. Yes, sir. And we ask that we stick to the special meeting agenda item, which I see you did submit a card, and so if you could, please keep it to one item. Merge the two if you choose. I certainly don't mind if this council would like to allow for two cards to be submitted. I think we have a lot of cards tonight, so we'd appreciate it if you could.
Just, just one.
Yes, sir. Please.
Okay. So I hear that we're in here to see if the city manager is going to get fired. And I saw the meeting the other night, and you were talking about favoritism. And he was favoritism Kevin Mann, the man that owns the spaceman stores that came in and testified that I lived in the warehouses. Accused me of being homeless, living in the warehouse. I wasn't there. Didn't live in there. I had a police officer in the unit next to me that was my renter. He was up there as much as I was. The month before you found me guilty, he commented he was there up there for 160 hours working on his cars. We built two of them in one year. And then Kevin Mann, he testified that he didn't have any people living in his warehouse. There was a half a dozen of them in there, and I gave the board after the code enforcement here, and I gave them all pictures of them. And they were left in there just to piss me off, is all it was. Thought I would go over there and take the law into my own hands. Not going to do that, man. Took the FBI, when you called the FBI, that's when they got them all out. He barked at me out there in the parking lot, and I barked back, and then I went home. Over here, he sided with them. He wouldn't give me a code reduction hearing. Kevin Mann got there and testified against me, and then you wouldn't let me defend myself. I told you, driver's license, electric bill, phone bill, electric bill. I don't live in the warehouse. This went on for four months. And then when I testified, Kevin gets up and testifies after me. Throws me under the bus, and a lawyer, she wouldn't let me defend myself. And I took a sign and put her name on it, that Bogan Munson Munson hires corrupt, boneheaded lawyers. And Judge Crawford came out of the courthouse over that sign, and three days later, Bogan Munson Munson pulled her profile off their website, and then she bid on the job in Destin, Florida, just to give her a bone, because they didn't want her. He got rid of her, too. Letting somebody not defend themselves. She's a lawyer. She's the judge in there. It's disgusting. And this manager over there, he trespassed me. Your city manager trespassed me, Mr. Green, and he got fired for that. And Mr. Randall's lost his first election in 31 years because of that. And then you give him the manager's job, and then he trespassed me again last year. And he claimed it was an accident. He sent his two goons out here. They didn't even introduce themselves to him. And I sent him an email and said, hey, who's those two guys that came out there and trespassed me? He said he would be responsible for it, that he would take the blame. And then you, your people that's holding your signs wants to come out there and beat me up because I'm holding a toy sign. I could put a nasty sign out there. Judge Crawford asked me to take that sign over here, Randall's sign and Kim Cop's sign, because you guys caused the problem. And when he left, he went back in with the two deputies and a psychologist. He said, if I had a sign that said I was railroaded, he may hold it. So we need to get rid of this manager over there. And as far as Brian Palmer goes, I don't have a problem with Brian Palmer. Yeah, he's on the code board, but Dree, the one you fired or quit or whatever, she's the one that caused the problem. Because I asked her the second, I didn't tell my renter the cop anything about this, except for the first meeting. Said, hey, the code board, I think I got them under control. I told them they're all on the other side. He's just said, well, I'm just glad I'm not involved. So when they started coming back, I didn't tell him. Yeah, he probably would have come and said something. But how many people got fired here? He got two promotions, man. He got a promotion from deputy to detective. And everybody else here got fired. You need to get rid of the city manager. This is what we're here for. Anybody wants to give me any information, if anybody knows anything that could help me out to get him fired, you can email me at sandybritches@yahoo, spelled just like it sounds. And I know I got six minutes because I turned the light off, forgot to turn the light off. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have, I'm going to, we have Dan Coon is the next one, and just so you're ready, following Dan Coon is Michelle Savistano, and then Angela Raymond.
Can you do those in order, please, with the one that came in?
They came in multiple stacks.
Okay, Dan Coon, live 226 Polk Avenue, right over here, the new construction. And I just wanted to say that I support Todd as our city manager. He's been doing an excellent job, had some challenges with the building department. But since I've started my construction, my experience has been that they've really turned it around. All of our inspections have been timely, professional, and courteous. So I do not support the firing of Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Coon. Michelle Savistano, Angela Raymond, Don Mays will follow.
Hello, my name is Michelle Savistano, and I'm from the Cape Canaveral Estates. I spoke at the December meeting and brought forth my concerns about the damage I received from Hurricane Helene and the flooding thereafter. We are pleased that the city is finally addressing the cleanup of the canal behind us, so I thank you for that. But from the hurricane and the canal, I have incurred a lot of damage. My AC and heat unit got destroyed, and I have to pay approximately $10,000 to replace it. I had no heat for months, and I had a roof leak from the hurricane, water damage inside, which is going to be like 6,000. So the cost has been substantial, both monetarily and health-wise, from the mold in the walls and AC ducts. So while dredging the canal will eliminate some of the problem by allowing the runoff of the water to enter, we are still affected by the adjacent properties who must do their part. And that's the Mango Manor and the other side. So I'm asking the city to please address the issues with the adjacent properties. And my second asking is FEMA has been nowhere to be found. I have submitted my application and stuff like that. So they say I'm waiting for an inspector. Is there any way that the city could help with that? That's my question. Two questions.
We will, I'll make sure to take a note of that, and we'll follow up with you if you have my email and try to get an answer to you as soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If John Bond wants to go before me, he's more than welcome.
So Angela Raymond, Don Mays, and then following is Brandon Ibach.
I'm Angela Raymond, and I was a former member of the city council, and I have nothing but wonderful things to say about Todd Morley. As I said in the past, I think that he has worked here for 23 years, and he's shown his loyalty to this city in good times and in bad times. And I think to judge on just one or two cases is a bit ridiculous. I find that this is a new height of ugliness that I found at the city council. And to tell the truth, I'm very embarrassed about it. And other people from other cities are watching us. I don't know if the press is here tonight, but they ought to be. I think that the way that some of the staff has been treated is a terrible thing. Anyone in management knows that whenever you have something negative to say to someone who's working day and night, you take them aside and you speak to them privately. You don't embarrass them at a city council meeting. I almost feel that some of our staff is working under a hostile environment, and this is wrong. Our staff was happy. Our staff was working together, laughing together, and enjoying themselves as they're working. You should enjoy your work. Now, I'm not so certain. I see that there's a lot of angst, and I think some of that has been created by you, mayor. And I feel sorry for you right now. And I have some empathy and sympathy about the way that you have acted in public and some of the things that you have said. And I'm sorry to say, but Todd Morley has been a loyal employee, and he should stay a loyal employee. And you can't judge on just one or two things that have happened in the city. You have hashed and rehashed over and over again, two places, Fillmore and Jackson. Excuse me, we're a whole city, and we have 10,000 residents here. We all have issues. Please, don't make a judgment on just one or two things. Look at all the hundreds of different things that Todd Morley has done. The good things, along with what you might call a mistake. If you've never made a mistake in your life, you know, stand up. Excuse me, I've had enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, hi, Don Mays, Brandon Ibach, and John Bond.
Good evening. My name is Don Mays. I am here in two capacities, one as a property owner of a number of commercial properties at the end of Astronaut Boulevard, and as well, I am the chair of the bedboard for the city of Cape Canaveral. I have two issues tonight I'd like to share. First and foremost, I find it very, I'm glad there's a crowd here, but the notice level on this meeting was minimal at best. Normally, a city council meeting has a much longer notice period. I just happened to see it this afternoon in my email. And so that was very discerning to me, is how quickly that the mayor requested this meeting at 4 o'clock on a Friday for a meeting on a Tuesday evening. There was not a lot of time for people to have an opportunity to respond. Second of all, I'm here standing in strong support of Todd Morley. I have worked with him on a variety of projects over the last 20 years. He has in a variety of different roles. I have seen him represent the city in community organizations. I have seen him work directly with projects that we have done. And I've also seen him consistently work with staff in positive and productive ways. I stand again in accordance with the fact that I believe he is an excellent city manager and has done a great job. I can't really top what Angela said. I thought she did a great job. But I do ask that the city council look at the whole of his work over all the years of service and his ability to do an amazing job with the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Brandon Ibach, John Bond, Lisa Day.
My name is Brandon Ibach, and I'm a resident of Merritt Island. To the citizens and the staff of the city of Cape Canaveral, let me say that I envy you. Those who have lived or worked here long enough have had twice the years that I've enjoyed of the personal and professional qualities of Todd Morley. He is one of the finest people I have ever had the pleasure to call my friend. With the connection of my family, there are very few things in my life which give me nearly the feeling of pride and accomplishment as the work and live music that I have done with Todd in the last 10 years. He has helped me grow, both technically and personally, always seeking to improve the quality of our work, the professionalism with which it is performed, and the value it brings to both our audiences and the venues that employ us. I envy you in that the city and its people enjoy the full benefit of not only Todd's extensive knowledge and experience in matters of city business, but also his leadership abilities. He has often built me up for my technical contributions to our shared work, has helped me to see where I can grow as I seek to emulate his remarkable capacity for encouragement, patience, compassion, and mentorship to his peers and his teams. Contrary to the pictures some may try to paint here, I have never known Todd to seek out power, leverage, or even recognition. Believe me, there are times that I have begged him to embrace his abilities as a leader, to herd the cats, or guide his fellow musicians. He has always steadfastly maintained his philosophy that we're all in this together as equals. I'd like to say that there is something for which you can all envy me in return, because I get to work with Todd in his true passion, music. However, I've often heard him talk about his work for the city and its people, and I assure you, his passion for it suffers no loss in the comparison. Todd has had a long and accomplished career in the city of Cape Canaveral, and I know he wanted to continue here until he was ready to step down from his career as a civil servant. He is a better man than I can ever imagine myself being, enduring with poise and dignity the often deplorable behavior and reprehensible tactics we witnessed in recent proceedings here by those clearly pursuing some sort of misguided personal crusade or vendetta, rules and ethics be damned. If this council and its leader simply cannot effectively work with Todd for the good of the city, then I hope they will do right by him in the pardoning of their ways, lest there be nothing left to envy in this community and its moral fabric. Thank you.
Thank you. John Bond, Lisa Day, Susan Denny.
Normally, I don't need a mic, but for recording purposes. Mr. Mayor, I have supported you in the past, but absolutely cannot do so tonight. And I'm going to try to right a wrong before it even occurs. You've seen the letter that's in front of you. It's my understanding that those allegations have already been reported to the state, so we'll see what comes out of that. I know you don't like Todd Morley, the city manager. There were two, I also know that there were two issues caused by employees for which you're trying to hold the city manager accountable. Those long-term employees are no longer with the city, and at least one of them was fired by Todd. Todd spent a lot of time fixing the issues that happened, and they were pretty much due to permitting. He's the best city manager we've ever had. Of course, I wasn't around here when the city was founded in 1966. I was five years old. You remember the fiasco of David Green, his reign, and what happened at the end. Todd is a delight and very popular with the residents. He's experienced, he's intelligent, he's objective, and his work is widely admired by a lot of people, and other cities would love to get their hands on him. We can't let that happen. And he's too loyal to the city. Now, let's talk about something that really counts, and that's money. If you fire Todd, it's going to cost $200,000 to $300,000 to replace him, and that's not exaggerating. You're going to have to pay him either his severance, which is about $60,000 plus, or you're going to wind up paying attorney's fees. You're also going to have to pay a consultant or a headhunter to find another city manager. And 20 years ago, I don't know if you were around, but it cost about $182,000 to hire David Green. So with the extreme rollbacks that you have instituted, the city cannot afford to do this right now. With the condo reassessments, when the condo reassessments take place, after the 15% to 20% drop in value over the last 18 months, the coffers are going to be very, very empty. And I know, as a real estate broker, I know that the market is not coming back overnight. And all of this is wrong, just very wrong. It will be a stain on your legacy and the city in general, and we do not need this type of publicity. And I'm asking you to drop this action. It makes no sense to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Day, Susan Denny, Bob Bogger.
Lisa Day, Executive Administrative Assistant to Todd Morley and Office Manager for City Hall. I am beyond outraged by the accusations and the treatment that this city council has placed on current and past employees. I have sat quietly, meeting after meeting, watching some of you bully, belittle, accuse, and call for the removal of several staff members who have long served this community with dignity and respect. Tonight, I can no longer sit quiet and watch you call for the removal of our city manager. Tonight, I am the voice of my coworkers and those residents in the city who do not support the firing of Todd Morley. He has done an amazing job for this city and has continuously supported your efforts and those of the residents. When you took your oath of office, you swore to represent all of the citizens of Cape Canaveral, not just the few, but that is not the case. It seems as though those few individuals with grudges against the city have swayed your decisions to support their vendetta in firing Todd Morley. You, as council members, know the good that Todd has done, but choose to ignore his successes. To support this vendetta, and in doing so, the residents of Cape Canaveral will soon see who their true leader was and the differences he has made for this community. Thank you.
Susan Denny, Bob Bogger, Nancy Dean. Hi, Susan.
Hi, I'm Susan Denny. I'm currently on the Planning and Zoning Board, and I live in Cape Canaveral. I love it. I think that Todd is a very nice man. I think some of the things that we heard in the other meetings were accountability. I have been a manager. I've been an assistant director. I have managed over 100 people, hourly salary, engineers, you know, you name it. And I'm accountable for everybody underneath me in that organization. It has always been the leader who is accountable. I know a great vice president that we had in our company, he signed off on a travel expense. Well, guess what? He didn't read it good enough, or there wasn't, he got fired because it was a bad thing that happened through the company. So, you know, I think the good old boy network was mentioned. I've seen it. I've seen it. And when I first started on the board, I was, I did this just because I'm retired, and I wanted something to do. I care about this city. And to me, I almost quit because I could see it. Okay? I see the city moving in a great direction. There's a lot of good stuff going on. There's a lot of good people. I did see a lot of young people who I thought were very talented. They left. I don't know why they left. But when it comes to accountability, it stops at the top, right? If your cell phone doesn't work, or, you know, you can't know what everybody does, well, that's what your job is. That's why you have supervisors. That's why you have meetings. That's why you have open door policies to make sure you know what's going on, because you're ultimately accountable. You know, I don't, I think we're getting better information on the Planning and Zoning Board. It was like pulling teeth to get a lot of it. When the parking issue came up, you know, people were saying, well, what about Slide In? What about Tip Of View? You know, do they have enough parking spaces? You got this little nod. Well, you know, I don't know. Well, my husband and I went out drinking beer at all the bars. Okay? So that's four beers per bar, because I wouldn't do just one and done, counting seats and stuff. So we went out on our own. I presented the data that not everybody's being treated fairly. Moon Hut, they got a CO with not having enough parking spaces, and they were a new business. That wasn't part of the exempt ones, the existing. So I think that there is some selective stuff going on. So I do think Todd is a nice man, but I think the city needs to step up.
Thank you. Bob Bogger. Nancy Dean. Lamar Russell.
Bob Bogger. I actually live in Cocoa Beach, but I'm a large property owner here. I've been doing business in Cape Canaveral since '91. My family moved to this area in '61. My dad moved into Cape Canaveral. We came family eight months later. So I've seen Cape Canaveral change, okay? And so the leadership for that change came from the different commissioners and the managers that ran it. So I can tell you without any hesitation that Todd ranks up there as one of the better city managers I have seen. I have worked with him. Every meeting, and I have many, always started with the best interest of the city and ended with the best interest. We never always agreed on everything, but we worked through it, and I think the city was benefited for it. Take an example, as across from the Radisson, we put in a development agreement that we negotiated with the city attorney and Todd and the city council, and basically it kept 450 jobs in. It also allowed us to improve tremendously the building. So ethically, you won't find anybody better. And what seems to be missing from this is there's a historical perspective of this city that when you, long-term employees leave, you lose a lot. So I'm, of course, against this. I consider Todd a friend. We do not socialize. I've never socialized with him after hours. But he is a friend because he's very ethical and forthright, what he can do and what he can't do. And in my observation of his talents, he has always been with the commissioner. So I don't know what got off base on this commission with him not being able to work with the will of the commission, because you all hire and fire. You're the last thing in the city. I recognize that. And for me, I try to stay out of the politics of this city because I'm a high-profile target. So, but I want to mention a couple of things. of things. The lien, I listened to the last, um, uh, commission meeting and, and the big issue on the lien. Well, I bought a property that had a $90,000 lien on it. The, the, the city, uh, released it. I did not pay for it, okay? Uh, I found a technical flaw in the lien. It was a five or six acre, eight acre parcel and had multiple addresses and they were putting, uh, the wrong address on the lien. So I had a technical issue. It got passed. Nobody got fired. My point, you won't find a better or more ethical person to help you run this city.
Thank you. Nancy Dean, Lamar Russell, Tom Shoriat.
Good evening. Uh, I have been in front of all of you before, and, um, I'm half, back tonight. Uh, I have much regret to have to tell you that last time I was here, um, the city staff was told that they were to communicate with me, uh, and, um, that has not been the case. So I do want you to know that right off the bat. Um, right after the meeting we had in November, um, I had a lot of questions and emails and things that still to this day have not been answered. At any rate, um, the reason why I'm here is because, um, I have lost confidence in the city staff, in particular in the building department. Um, I have lost confidence in, in the manager. Um, my first, uh, time speaking to him ever was in mid-July. There was a project going on in my neighborhood I was very concerned about, and, um, I had a conference call. Little did I know, uh, a call came into my phone. There were three people on the phone. There was, um, I don't want to mention their name, but there was Todd and two other staff members on the phone. I expressed what my concern was, uh, about this project going on on Coral Drive. He said, I will get back to you. It probably, within 24 hours. This was mid-July. I'm still waiting. The call never came in. But at any rate, um, around July 26th, because I didn't hear from him, uh, I did everything I could do with all staff members to get help. I contacted the mayor. I, I, I gave everybody a chance. I contacted the mayor. I communicated with the mayor what was going on with the project and my concerns. So I just wanted to, to, to let you know that. Now, I, another reason why I have lost confidence, this is now a safety issue. I don't want to talk anymore about that project. I want to talk about a safety issue related to that project. It was brought to my attention on November 24th that there was a pool that had been built. That pool was filled with water. The back fencing was totally dilapidated. There were slats down, totally unsafe for children in the neighborhood. Uh, the place was not secured. The pool was filled with water. I was very, very worried about it. So I contacted the city. I, I said, look, I don't even think this may, meets Florida statute law. You've got a pool sitting here. You've got a fence totally dilapidated. You know, pay attention to this. Um, it really bothered me. There was nothing done for many, many, many weeks. So that pool was filled with water, wasn't secure. There's a Florida statute law that says you must have proper fencing around a pool. Um, so I just, I've just lost all confidence. I tried my best to make sure that the city staff knew what was going on. Emails were not answered. Telephone calls were not answered. I've just totally lost confidence in the city, in your manager. And I think the city of Cape Canaveral can do a lot better. And aside from that, there could have possibly been a big liability here. That gentleman that was talking money and finances.
Nancy, we're going to have to cut it. I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Okay.
We have a lot of cards. Thank you. Lamar Russell, Tom Shoriat, Jim Houston.
I'm Lamar Russell. Uh, thank you for hearing me. As I look around the city, I see a clean, orderly place. Streets are clean. Roads are paved. Power lines work. Sewer system works good. It's managed well. We have a well-managed city. Why should we divert our attention of running this great place to a few issues surrounding, uh, one person? We don't need to do that. We don't need that problem. The garbage is well-collected, hurricanes notwithstanding. Todd came here at a time when the city was not well-organized. People used to wander around in the departments, council members too, mayors, give it everybody, go-dos. Everybody had a go-to, and nobody knew who to answer to. And Todd came here, he organized it, he cut off that wandering around. He made a, a, a system where you fill out a sheet, state your problem, it goes on the stack, and it gets worked. When it comes to the top, your problem's going to get worked. Well, okay, there are a few problems now that people are telling us that are not getting worked. They need attention. We need to help him put more attention on those jobs. We don't need to get rid of him. That would not be a good thing to do because you'll spend hours and hours of useless time, not on their problems, but on your problems of finding a replacement. If we keep Todd and give him the tools and work with him better, we'll be able to work with their problems and not your problems. I think we ought to keep Todd. He's a good man. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, Tom Shoriat, Jim Houston, and Stuart Smith.
Good evening. Tom Shoriat, property owner, resident here in the city. I watched, uh, last week's, uh, council meeting. I was pretty outraged about the $10,000 lien that wasn't recorded and not paid to the city. And that comes out of our pockets, the taxpayers. That could have gone towards the city's finances and lowered our tax rate next year. And to think that it's not standard procedure to record a lien for a code enforcement violation once the magistrate has determined that there is a fine due, that's ridiculous. That's, that's, uh, negligence. I don't know the city manager. Never met him before, but I have to say, this is the way the city's run. He probably, you probably should replace him with someone else. And another thing, I, I like to walk around the city. The city is, is, some of the blocks are just pitch black. No street lighting. What's going to be done about that? That's something, if I was managing a city, I'd maybe take a drive through at night down the streets and see what things look like. And it's, it's, we have a pretty safe city, but it, it's, some of the streets are just pitch black, and those same streets don't have sidewalks on them. Uh, another thing, the, um, perhaps, you know, how many other properties, the $10,000 lien that we just discussed last week, how many other properties has that happened on that we don't know about, is my, my, the big question to be answered. And that's, could be, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in city revenue that's lost. And to think that you're not in charge of that, Todd, that's pretty ridiculous. And, you know, I, I don't think you, really, if that's, you're that flippant with the city's money, you probably shouldn't be employed here. I know if someone in the private sector costs their employer $10,000 because of their negligence, or I forgot to do something, didn't have the procedure, they get fired. And I think we ought to look into how many other properties this has occurred on, and, uh, how many other liens should have been recorded that weren't, and how much the revenue loss was to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Houston, Stuart Smith, Tamara Mulback. Stuart Smith, Tamara, Bill Skinner.
Uh, good evening, all. Thanks for the opportunity to address the council and city manager and city attorney. My name is Stuart Smith. I live at 215 Coral Drive. I'm also a member of the Business and Economic Development Board, the BED Board, as we call it. Um, that could be changed. Um, full transparency. I do not have a financial, um, interest or otherwise involved in Ellie Mae. Um, I was here when, when Todd was selected as city manager and completely supported him at the time. But here's my concern. Um, I watched the city council meeting from 1/21, and I have to say it was not must-see TV in any way, shape, or form. And I actually, you can blame me, I sent the email requesting this special meeting because I just felt if it went too long, if it went to the next regular meeting, too much time would be elapsed. And what I saw was just dysfunction. This is not a Todd issue or city council. This is an us issue. Like, we got to get it, we got to get it together. If you watched this from the outside looking in, it was, it was really difficult to, to watch. So I was concerned about, um, I'm really concerned about good governance and operation in the city and being in question. And it includes the things I sent in the email. Lack of clarity and transparency, lack of adherence and accountability, um, and addressing or resolving real perceived impropriety dealing with the city staff, city council members, citizens in particular, and property owners. So as a citizen, I'm concerned that if the issues aren't addressed immediately, that we would just be open to more problems, right? So that was the, that was the impetus for asking to convene this sooner than later. Um, I also had a long career in human resources, and I know when you have employee issues, they're difficult. Um, it's like a Band-Aid, right? It's best when pulled off. So if, and that's a big if, Todd, the city manager, violates city laws, code procedures, violation is of the severity to terminate him, then do so. If it is not, let's get our stuff together as a council and city staff and work together effectively and clean up the code enforcement policies and procedures. So that's all I ask. And this is not a lecture. It's just an appeal, that a reminder as elected officials and staff, you guys have a higher purpose than your worldview, your political leanings, your orientation, or even your ability to work together effectively, interpersonally. And I'm really hoping that this evening we can come to whatever the right resolution is. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Skinner, Peg Schaller.
Hi, Bill Skinner, manager and resident, Cape Canaveral Mobile Estates. First, I'd like to thank the city and, uh, Tim for finally getting that drainage ditch going. But with the other three problems with the adjoining properties, um, I keep getting blown off. And it's been that way since I've been down here. I'd just like to know the reason why. Code enforcement never followed up, and with numerous back and forth, I even came down here to speak with somebody, and I was told that they'd get back to me. And to this day, they just blow me off on it. And it's a concern with all the residents. Um, just like to have that resolved. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Peg Schaller. Tina Freeman.
Uh, Tim Mulback, and I'm a resident here in Cape Canaveral. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak, make it brief. I'd like to take a moment to point out lack of fiscal responsibility and poor decision-making exit of it by the city manager in the last 12 months. This is in addition to all the city's time and resources to deflect responsibility for improprieties conducted by city staff on Fillmore Jackson. Deflection tactics include smoke screens, redirecting, avoiding direct answers, burying facts in minutia, poor record-keeping, just really a total lack of ethical conduct. I would like to point out, when the city manager did his report of findings on Jackson and Fillmore investigation, one of the city manager's recommendation was to create a new org chart slash director position. This would in effect create a new position for an underperforming director that was part of the problem and cost the taxpayers another six-figure salary, or one close to it. Now he wants to take credit for the fact that the director's no longer here with the city. In the end, the director separated with, from the, um, city with severance package. None of the bad actors were disciplined. Shifting gears to post-hurricane recovery in the under-resourced mobile community, a no sense of urgency was displayed in addressing the emergent health and safety issues with power lines, standing water, and fire, even when there are photographs of imminent danger. It was days later before the city manager got involved. The property experienced significant flooding, homes literally drowned in water. Bill Skinner, property manager, who addressed Todd and council in the October 24th meeting, had begged for help. The reason that Todd had given for not sending the city's water pump to the property was, it was me wanting to be prudent with the city's resources. That seemed kind of incredulous to me. We didn't need to buy a pump, just move it to the sinking property. Interesting timing to be fiscally responsible. This is so much bigger than Jackson and Fillmore, just the tip of the iceberg. The cities, the citizens of Cape Canaveral deserve so much better in the reign of the Good Old Boy Network. Thank you.
Thank you. Peg Schaller, Tina Freeman, Eileen Idem.
Good evening again, council. Peg Schaller, a business owner and a resident of Cape Canaveral. The narrative that has been displayed up here that the city council has been rude to staff is only because staff was not giving, getting the answers back to council. Council had to ask repeatedly for the information, and staff did its very best not to give that information. The narrative is, is that the city manager took action as soon as he knew that the staff members underneath him were derelict in their duties. However, that is verifiably false. The city manager was well-aware of the dereliction of duties as written by a letter from my attorney dated August 14th of 2023, months before city council brought it to the attention of the public. Had the city manager taken any action to ensure that the selective enforcement that was rampant in this city would cease, would, would not gotten to city council. Instead, city council asked questions and they received false information. They received false information about what documents were available. Documents were falsely identified. Documents were manipulated in the system. I have met with Todd. I think he's a really nice guy. However, he is, he did not take responsibility, still hasn't taken responsibility. To my knowledge, no one was fired. No disciplinary action. We have a building that I requested eight times because of a life safety issue. Mr. Willis was clearly able to see it with his eyes. It was dilapidated. You folks have all been there. Spent my entire life savings to create a safe space in the city of Cape Canaveral, and instead of getting help, I was retaliated against, not once, but twice. Each of the eight times I asked for help, the only thing that I got was another notice of violation, which by the way, were unsubstantiated. When you take responsibility for your team and immediately ask for the information of why the selective enforcement has been happening, you don't wait for city council to ask you to do it. You do it when that becomes aware, when you are aware, when you are received a certified letter stating of the impropriety and the times and the dates. That's the time you earn the respect of your citizens. The org chart is the citizens of Cape Canaveral, then it is the council, and then is the city manager. There's no guarantee the next person that comes to, tries to help the city is not going to receive the same treatment I did because it wasn't until council asked for action that action was taken.
Thank you. Tina Freeman, Eileen Idem, and Lee Visadomani.
Good evening, city council members. Um, my name is Tina Freeman. I'm a full-time resident and property owner here in Cape Canaveral and have been since 1996. Um, I too have witnessed a group, um, being singled out and targeted on an issue by a couple of bad employees when it was their incompetence, incomplete records, and under the watch of the city manager. I know firsthand the detrimental effect it had on our condo boards and our neighbors. First and foremost, I've done the research and I've been involved with the city, coming to city council meetings and and I've been involved with the city, coming to city council meetings and such. First and foremost, the taxpaying citizens have already lost so much money, not to mention the trust, as a direct result of the lack of oversight, the complete lack of follow-through, no accountability, and huge missed opportunities to collect fines on violations and those violators. It has cost us a lot of money, not to mention aggravation. Then to add insult to injury. We're rewarding, the city is rewarding those bad employees for their bad behavior, for failing to do their job, for which they are paid with taxpayer money, and then they're turned around and rewarded with severance pay upon their exit. How is that being good financial stewards of our taxpayer money? I, I think enough is enough. And then to hear a city councilman say, well, this is a bad hand that he was dealt with. The city manager couldn't help what he was dealt with. When it was part and parcel, part of his doing. The city manager has been here for over two decades. He's been involved in several departments. He's continued to allow this, and contributed to this culture of a lack of transparency, disrespect of the citizens and the city council, the dereliction of duty, the bad behavior, and more is to be accepted. That's to be acceptable. The lack of processes, the lack of oversight is unacceptable. The lack of due diligence, the failure to carry out the responsibilities of the job, not following the mandates and the codes that the city has established, it absolutely should not be rewarded. Most importantly, I believe that 76% of the citizens re-electing the mayor speaks volumes for what and who the city residents support, their ideals, and their policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen? Idem, and Levis Adominy. And if you have not heard your card raised, or you passed, or wanted to go again, just please come forward and we'll make sure you're heard. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eileen Idem. I'm a city resident, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak on a couple of concerns. One being, well, actually both from the meeting on Friday. But it was mentioned that when the transfer of the phone took place due to a poor battery charge, that information was transferred over to the new phone with the exception of text messages. And just with the clouds up above and all the technology that we have today, I'm, I'm just truly surprised that that happened. And I'm curious, we didn't really get an answer the other night. We were told that photos transferred, but I'm wondering if contacts were transferred over, if emails were transferred over. I'm only assuming that they were. So how is it possible that text messages only weren't transferred? I, I would love to find out the answer to that sometime in the future. And then another concern that I had was, I believe it was, council member Davis was talking about the inability to really, truly manage somebody 24/7. I think she had asked you, Mayor Morrison, if you actually had the opportunity to supervise or manage somebody, because you can't possibly know what they are doing all the time. And I have to disagree with that. I have worked in the public and the private sector. I have supervised, and I have been supervised in both the private and public sector. And I do know that it's all about accountability. You have meetings, you have schedules, you get together, you go over projects and agendas, and you follow up. That is what it means to be accountable to your direct support. And I understand there were, I believe, three direct support to, to Mr. Morley, and, and they are no longer at the city. And I just believe that if the city manager had done his job, then the direct support would have done their job, and we wouldn't be in this position right now with the city manager trying to keep his job. Thank you.
Thank you. Levis Adominy? And for those of you who are listening online, if you intend to speak, we ask that you raise your hand, and we'll follow the same procedures and try to unmute you and make sure you're heard. Just want to give you a heads up. Thank you, Ms. Adominy.
Good evening. I've been a resident since 1989. I've seen people come, I've seen people go. I've seen things done well, I've seen things done not well. My concern as a citizen is the way we treat our business people is very, very important. I happened to be at Peg's the day that they said her garage was cleaned out, and it wasn't, and she made the phone call to the city. I was quite concerned. I was, Peg questioned me about the lien, and I said to her, you have title. If it's not on your title, you don't have to pay the lien. This is a problem between the title company and the city, who have a clean title. As those people on Fillmore, they have title insurance. And that title insurance guarantees them that their property is safe. This isn't between you. This is between Anthony, who deals with the title company. That's why we pay Anthony the money we pay Anthony. None of us have that knowledge. Nobody sitting here has a law degree. From my standpoint, I don't know all the ins, all the outs. My next concern is, what is it costing me? This is my bottom line, always. It was brought to Todd, to the best of my knowledge, it was brought to Todd's. Gave Todd information about city employees that weren't doing their jobs. To the best of my knowledge, those people are no longer working here. If they were terminated, and we, as a city, terminate Todd, we're holding ourselves liable for lawsuits. Haven't we paid enough money? With the, the buildings on Fillmore, it's a title problem. It's not our problem. It's a title problem. We all pay title insurance. We're getting confused if we throw out the person that instructed the other people to go, and there's quite a few of them. Like, why wasn't that, that leverage against the building? Is that our city clerk who no longer is here? Was that her job? She's behind Todd. Was it Mayor's job to make sure Todd had this information? We don't know. She's not here. We can all second-guess and do all of these other things. But we're up here, right? Somebody's head of the city.
Thank you.
Can I continue? Can I ask for continuance, Mayor, as you do many meetings?
What's that?
Can I ask for continuance, as you do many meetings?
I try to be balanced with all of them. I gave some people ten extra seconds or so, it would be fine.
Thank you. So if we aren't holding ourselves to the same standard that we ask our city leaders to hold themselves to, we're responsible for our money. Let's end the bleeding of our money. Let's hire a real engineer instead of a company paying $100,000. Can we pay someone cheaper to be on our staff to okay these things? And now we know, we need an engineer. Because they didn't have an engineer, we have these problems on Fillmore.
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Anthony.
All right, is anybody intended to speak that didn't get a chance to submit a card? Okay, seeing none, we are still in public participation. If anyone online would like to speak, we ask that you please raise your digital hand, and we'll make sure to unmute you. From top to bottom, the first one. Ginny Coldiron? Am I unmuting? I'm going to leave it alone if I've got some help back there. Want to unmute Ginny Coldiron? Thank you for your patience trying to figure it out. Okay Ginny, you're unmuted.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Floor is yours.
Can, can y'all hear me?
Ginny, if you can hear us, we cannot hear you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I can't, I don't know what's going on.
IT, if there's anything that I can do to help, please let me know.
I'll try one more time, can anybody hear me?
Thank y'all for your patience.
Shoot.
Hey Ginny, can, I believe we can hear you now.
You can hear me now?
Yes, maybe a little louder, please.
Okay, is this better?
I think you're talking fine, if we can increase the volume. Okay, that's, we'll listen closely.
Okay, I'm sorry for the technical difficulties. My name is Ginny Coldiron, and I was the deputy finance director at the city of Cape Canaveral from January 2020 until March of 2024. And tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of Todd Morley. I will not speak to the specific situation that the mayor and other council members have alluded to in regards to their decision, but I feel I had to speak out regarding Todd Morley's integrity and character, of which he has plenty. His leadership is the type of leadership that good employees thrive under. He is not a micromanager and trusts his directors to run their departments as they see fit. However, I know for a fact that if city rules or regulations were not being followed, and Todd knew about it, he would not have allowed it to continue. He is not a facilitator of, and does not participate in the quote "good old boy" system that the mayor mentioned in the last meeting. In my experience, that would be the exact opposite of what he expects from city staff. He does and did trust his staff members to do the right thing and do their jobs correctly. He also does not make snap decisions when it comes to his staff. I'm sure he wanted to believe in the honesty and integrity of his employees. This is the type of leadership you want in the city. He is empathetic to his staff and truly cares about things that go on with his staff outside of the city hall. Todd has been over backwards to serve this city, the council, and his staff. From what I see, it's a thankless job trying to constantly balance all of those needs. But I think he's done it well. I respectfully ask that the entire council please reconsider this decision. Please don't make an unfortunate situation even worse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Pat Campbell? We'll go ahead and try to unmute you, some help.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
My name is Patrick Campbell. I'm a 40-year resident of the city of Cape Canaveral, 40 years. I think, I think, from my perspective, citizens expect accurate and consistent application of city ordinances. In my experience with the city for a number of years, I feel you're falling short in the accurate and consistent application of the ordinances. I have a, if laser fitch is up, anyone can go in and review.
We, we lost you there.
Well, I don't, I don't know where you lost me at.
We, we can hear you now.
Okay. I'll start over. Citizens expect accurate and consistent application of the ordinances. In my experience over a number of years, I think the city falls short on the accurate and consistent application of our city ordinances. If laser fitch is up, anyone can go in and go to the public records section. I have a number of folders in there, anybody can review things that I have, I have asked to be addressed in the city. I will say that in all of my dealings with Todd, and I believe I probably have had quite a few by any measure, Todd has always been professional. It's never been a matter of, doesn't care, is he professional? It's a matter of, of results. And from my perspective, the city's fallen short on consistently applying the ordinances. And when I say consistency, it spreads across to all kinds of things, not just code, code enforcement, but it's certainly code enforcement, just the one that's on my mind all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands raised online. Just want to make sure we've scrolled down, if you don't mind, to the bottom. And thank you all for participating and listening in. Okay, confirmed, no other hands are raised, and see one card in the back? Forward, Mr.?
President, city of Cape Canaveral, Joe Aber. Wasn't aware of all this stuff. The only thing I knew was I read an update that me of Go-4th was no longer here. Had no idea why that happened. Apparently, it was something happened here last meeting, which I did not attend and did not view online. Mr. Morley, I don't have anything against him. I think he is a very nice fellow, as like a lot of people have said. Mr. Morley was kind of forced upon the city council at the time. I don't think any of you were on the city council when he was appointed, except for maybe Mayor West. So, there's a reason that those other people aren't here anymore. You might want to think about that. A lot of the testimony I've heard are not coming from residents. They're coming from people that know him. One of the gentlemen said, his passion is music. It's his side-passion. Or are we his side-passion? I don't know what has happened. I have one issue that I've been working on for, since 2016. And that is the retention pond at the end of my street. Every time I've asked him, which hasn't been many, two or three, I always get told to go see, it was Jeff. Now it's, I can't think of his name. Tim, thank you, Carlisle. Still, nothing has ever been done down there. Every council person here has seen that retention pond, and it's still in the same shape. Eight years. Eight years, I heard somebody else complaining about something on Coral Drive, I think it was. So you're getting a lot of complaints. There's a reason for that. Somebody's not doing their job. And as another person said, it always goes to the top. He's the one that's got to make the, the choices. Now, if he's not getting the information from the people that are working for him, that's his job to fire them. And if those people aren't firing the people that are not doing the job for them, it's up to them to get him fired. And I know that the attorney has to watch all that stuff, because you don't want to get into a legal thing about firing people without cause. So really consider maybe being able to try to work this out. So really consider maybe being able to try to work this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that another card coming forward there? And Jenny, if you intend to speak, I just wanna make sure your hand is raised and, uh, didn't take that down, thank you, thank you, sir. Missy Aiken?
Hello, my name is Missy Aiken and this is one of the few city council meetings I have attended. Um, I'm not only a resident, I'm a property owner and I'm an employee of the city. Um, I'm fairly new to the state of Florida. I come from Scottsdale, Arizona, which is a very, very large city. I will have to say that I've been not only shocked but appalled by some of the things I have witnessed from the city council board. I was, um, very enlightened after reading a survey that was put out by, um, the city with its employees regarding the atmosphere, the climate of the city. And, um, I think that, um, kinda says it all. I'll have to say, I am new here to the city as an employee and on behalf of Todd, I don't know him very well, but my interactions with him have always been professional. He's always been outstanding, and so is everyone that I work with and have worked with in the city. I know some of you have had some issues, you seem to have some issues, but I think people need to understand, you live in a city, you are not the only people who have problems or issues. You're not the only people who bring their problems and issue to the city manager. There's a lot of people in this city who have a lot of issues. And because you don't get your response, or you don't get this, or you don't get that, or you don't get an email, maybe you need to take into account that there's other things that may be a little more pressing than what may be your issue at that point in time. Now, to you, they're very pressing because it's your issue or your concern. However, you're one amongst many other issues that occur within this city. And I'm not sure what all the legalities are right now that got us to this point right here, but I really think it's pretty appalling that this board has chosen to walk down this path rather than working with the city manager who not only respects the employees, but treats their employees with dignity, and the employees and the city are his passion. Just because someone said, "Music is his passion," doesn't mean the city comes second. He is here daily, his heart is in this job. The majority of the people that work for this city work for you, way beyond our eighty hours, way beyond the pay we receive for working in this city. So please keep an open mind and keep an open heart and do the right thing for the city, not your own agenda.
Is the microphone working? I understand it hasn't been for a couple of meetings. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm a little late, but later late than never. I just wanna comment on what this lovely lady just said, and I agree with a lot of what she just said. But what prompted me to step up, and I wasn't planning to, was their characterization of our elected city council as a board. This is not a board. These people have been voted on by the citizens of Cape Canaveral.
Hey Bruce, if you could address me.
Our mayor was elected with seventy-six percent of the vote at the polls. He wasn't appointed to a board, as are the other city council members who are elected. This is, we're a small town. This is what a small-town democracy is supposed to be. The mayor and the city council have taken an oath to perform due diligence on the ma, on the city manager and the people who work at city hall. That's what we elect them to do, that is their job. They are not a board that is volunteers to come in every once in a while and meddle in the city manager's business.
Hey Bruce, if you can speak into the mic and, please.
Okay, so, there was an old saying, "The buck stops here." And if there are discrepancies in code enforcement over the last four years or six years, however long Mr. Morley's been the city manager, if there have been discrepancies in code enforcement, selective code enforcement, well then, as the man at the top, he is responsible. He doesn't have to be a micromanager, but he has to accept responsibility and accountability. And I cannot understand how members of this elected city council can accept the reply, "I don't know." You know, my granddaughter, when I catch her doing something that's not, not kosher, and I ask her, "Annie, why did you do that?" She looks at me and she says, "I don't know." She's six years old, she's not fifty-six years old. She doesn't get paid $135,000 taxpayers' money a year not to know. Let's have some accountability in city hall, and I think that's what the mayor and several of our board, non-board members, our elected representatives are trying to do.
Thank you. Thank you. I see a hand raised from, I believe, Virginia Scott. Virginia, if it is your intention to speak, you are online, I wanna make sure we unmute you, thank you very much. I'll let you know, you are unmuted.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I just, this is a technical statement. I am online. I could hear the two people who spoke at the meeting who are all still online. I could hear them while you at the meeting live could not. That's all I wanted to let you guys know, if that helps you sort out any issues, okay?
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Um, I do not see any other hands raised and if, we don't wanna close it until we make sure, seeing no other hands or any cards, that completes. And with that, we'll go ahead and close public participation and bring it back here to the city council. First, I just wanna say thank you. Thank you all, each and every one of you. I love this city. We have tremendous staff. I do not disagree with many of the comments I heard about our city manager. There were some things that were stated that were based on some assumptions that, that should be corrected. The first is, no longer with this city? Yes, that's true. Terminated, disciplined, written up, I have not been made aware of any accountability at that level, despite hearing that people are being told they were fired. So I would feel just like you if that was the truth, and I would agree with you if that was the truth, but that's not what happened. We have a tough job to do, and so does city staff, and that's what makes the wheels of a city go around. So today, in the sake of efficiency, I prepared a, a statement that I think would help keep us on track. To the citizens of Cape Canaveral and esteemed members of the city council, tonight, I stand before you to speak not only about the challenges our city faces, but also about the opportunities we have to ensure our government reflects the values, standards, and aspirations of our community. At heart of this discussion is a decision, a difficult decision, but it's necessary to take action for the future of Cape Canaveral. Let me begin by asking you this. How much longer can we accept inefficiency and neglect in the systems that serve our residents? How much more can we allow excuses to delay progress? How many more opportunities will we miss to restore the faith and trust of the people we are here to serve? This is not just about Fillmore and Jackson Avenue. These incidents, while significant, are merely the latest symptoms of deeper, longstanding issues that have plagued our city operations. These issues have been echoed by the voices of our citizens, concerns raised over the years about the performance of our departments, the fairness of enforcement, and the integrity of our leadership. They represent patterns of inefficiency, negligence, and a failure to uphold the high standards our community deserves. Some might look around Cape Canaveral, like we heard tonight, and say, "Things seem fine. Look at the projects we've completed." But I'll remind you that those successes are largely the result of spending money, not necessarily operational efficiency or leadership. Beneath the surface, the information shared with the public over the years has often failed to align with reality. The full story has not always been told. And the realities of the inefficiency and neglect have often been obscured. The risks of inaction are immense. Continuing down this path exposes our city to lawsuits, further erosion of public trust, and inefficiencies that will inevitably lead to higher taxes. Every inefficiency and procedural failure costs our residents, not just financially, but in the trust and confidence they place in their government. Can we afford to let this continue? The city manager holds one of the most critical roles in our government. The position is entrusted with ensuring that every department runs efficiently, that our codes are enforced fairly, and that every dollar is spent responsibly. It is a position that requires competence, accountability, and leadership. And while mistakes can happen, they will happen because no one is imperfect, including myself. What are the dealing, what we're dealing with here is not just a single misstep, but a pattern. It's a pattern of negligence, incompetence, and the failure to meet the standards required by our city charter, city code, state law, and the employment agreement we signed. Some have said, "Everyone makes mistakes and no one is perfect." To that, I say this. As your mayor, I can say we have shown grace, we have shown mercy, we have shown forgiveness, we have shown patience. I've worked as hard as I can, and I know this council as well, to work, to exercise our city's values of kindness, accountability, integrity, and teamwork. But there comes a time when grace and forgiveness must make way for our duty to take decisive action. I believe that time is now. The failures we have seen under the city manager's leadership are not isolated incidents, from improper permitting and, and infrastructure issues to selective code enforcement and record-keeping failures. These are breaches of trust that affect the lives of our citizens. Beyond these specific examples, they reflect systemic weaknesses that demand immediate attention. Over the years, I have received countless inquiries from residents about issues like these. As mayor, I've made sacrifices, just as my fellow council members and city staff have, to serve this community. We do this work not for pay or recognition, but because we believe in the higher calling of leadership. Yet, the reality is that we cannot address every single issue if we are constantly moving from one problem to the next. That is why I chose to focus on Fillmore and Jackson, because these properties mirrored many of the historical problems within the same departments. The decision was to go all-in on a few cases to uncover the truth and fix these systemic issues for everyone who calls Cape Canaveral home. To my fellow council members, I recognize the sacrifices you make, the long hours, the difficult decisions, and the personal toll this work takes. But tonight, I remind you, the duty we have to hold accountable those who are well compensated to serve this city. The time has come for us to take that decisive action. I believe that, and the window of opportunity is now. The January 2024 special meeting that we've heard about, where these issues were first fully brought to light after years of unsuccessful attempts to solve them internally, working directly with staff, just reached its one-year anniversary. And yet, the problems largely remain, and worse, we have identified additional failures. How much longer can we wait to fix what we know is clearly broken? To my, sorry, to the citizens and all who are a part of this, I ask, do we have the courage to make the difficult decisions? Do we have the resolve to ensure that our government works for the people? I remind you of your duty, council, to hold the trusted place in us by our citizens. To ignore these failures, to allow a separation, severance, with, out, cause, is to fall and fail in that duty. To the citizens of Cape Canaveral, can we afford to accept anything less than excellence? Can we continue to entrust our future to leadership that has consistently fallen short in these areas? This decision is not about blame or punishment, it's about ensuring that our government operates with high integrity, competence, accountability, and professionalism. This is a pivotal moment for Cape Canaveral. By taking action, we send a message that we demand more from our leaders, that we are committed to restoring trust, and that we will not waver in our responsibility to protect and serve this community. I ask that we move forward with courage and resolve. Let us honestly and openly read and apply the terms of the agreement. Take the emotion out in many truths we heard tonight and look at what actually happened. And if we do that, we are obligated to follow and make the changes needed to ensure a better future for Cape Canaveral, one built on integrity, accountability, and trust. I've, council, I've prepared a document that I would like to share and put on the record as far as the, the points. I will pass one down for the city attorney as well. City manager as well. After reviewing the longstanding issues in our city and findings related to Fillmore and Jackson, from the January 2024 special meeting presented by the city manager and city attorney, and referencing applicable provisions of the City of Cape Canaveral Charter, Code, Florida State Laws, and the City Manager's Employment Agreement, I recommend the termination of the city manager with cause, and I'd like to explain. Below is a detailed and organized account of the reasons, basis, and recommendations for this action, aligned with the city's mission, vision, and values. First, reasons for termination. One, building department failures. The city manager failed to provide proper oversight and correct- The city manager failed to provide proper oversight and corrective action in addressing procedural and operational breakdowns in the building department. Specific issues include improper permitting and certificates of occupancy, approving inspections, building permits, and issuing certificates before construction met inspection and engineering design standards. Infrastructure failures, improper installation of drainage systems, swales, and utilities. Inadequate oversight, lack of adequate supervision of the community development department, resulting in repeated procedural errors and compromised public safety. Procedural failures such as poor record-keeping practices, lost records, and public hearing requirements hindered the city's ability to manage development. Two, code enforcement failures. Significant failures were evident under the city manager's oversight of the code enforcement department. Selective enforcement, inconsistent and unequal enforcement of city codes raising concerns about fairness and transparency. Records management, public records and database entries related to code enforcement actions were deleted, missing, altered, or poorly maintained, violating, I believe, Chapter 119 Florida statutes and undermining public trust. Database management, poor record-keeping practices hindered the city's ability to track and manage code violations effectively. Failure to file liens, the city failed to file liens after enforcement actions and magistrate orders were made, missing critical opportunities to hold violators accountable and recover costs, demonstrating fiscal negligence. Three, incompetence in fulfilling responsibilities. The employment agreement explicitly requires the city manager to perform the duties and responsibilities, quote, "to the best of his ability and in a professional and competent manner." Failures include: failure to maintain standards, approving permits and certificates without proper inspections, ensuring compliance with safety and engineering standards reflects a lack of competence in maintaining operational oversight. Ineffective leadership, persistent procedural issues and departmental failures demonstrate a lack of effective leadership with no disciplinary action taken and reported. Inability to implement best practices, mismanagement of record-keeping and enforcement, and transparency undermines public trust. Now, want to address the claims that were brought up in the last meeting regarding willfulness and intent. First, negligence as sufficient grounds, neglect of duty, incompetence, and reckless failure to perform are sufficient grounds for termination regardless of intent or willfulness. Two, objective standards incompetence, the city manager's performance did not meet the professional standards outlined in the employment agreement. Three, impact over intent, the harm caused by the city manager's actions, financial liabilities, diminished public trust, and compromised safety is the critical factor. Four, repeated failures despite warnings, after longstanding knowledge of the issues from staff, contractors, citizens, and eventually the city council, there was a continued inability to comply with the law and resolve the issues reflecting ongoing neglect of responsibilities. Misalignment with the mission, vision, and values, while these aren't contractual such as the charter, code, state law, or the agreement, they're very important, and we've spent a lot of time talking about them, and we, as a council, bear the heavy burden to apply them and to enforce them. The city's mission includes providing excellence in municipal services, fiscal responsibility, and environmental stewardship. The city's vision statement emphasizes resilience, safety, and responsible stewardship. The failures include: procedural errors and selective enforcement demonstrating a disregard for consistent and high-quality city operations, fiscal irresponsibility, including failing to file liens and approving severance pay for underperforming employees, infrastructure failures compromising our environmental integrity, neglecting resilient infrastructure and public safety, as we saw in Fillmore and Jackson incidents, inconsistent code enforcement undermining responsible governance, and the mismanagement of permits and selective enforcement discouraging business development. That's how they tie to the mission and vision. The values, while we have several, there's five that stand out. The first value, commitment to excellence, persistent departmental failures. Second one is accountability, no disciplinary actions for implicated employees. Third is fiscal responsibility, poor oversight in liens and security bonds not obtained. Four is integrity, altering, deleting public records and selective enforcement eroding trust. And five is communication, inaccurate and poor communication with the council and the public. The basis for termination. Employment agreement provisions, three of them. The first, Section 11C3, neglect of duty, failures in supervising departments and resolving procedural issues constitute neglect of duty. Number two, 11C4, reckless failure, mishandling public records, code enforcement, and permitting demonstrates reckless failure to perform those duties. And three, Section 3A incompetence, inability to fulfill duties promptly, professionally, and competently. The city charter and code violations.
I asked for a page so I can follow it up.
Here's another copy.
I got it, thank you.
You're very welcome. City charter and code violations. Charter, Section 402, this is the charter, this was adopted by the people. Failure to enforce municipal laws and oversee city operations effectively. The city code, Section 633, negligent oversight of departments and ineffective management. Code, Section 2101, failure to provide sustained administrative leadership and proper supervisions. I also believe that Chapters 119, 112, 3, and 112, 313 of Florida state statutes are in question. Chapter 119, alteration and deletion of public records violates transparency laws. And Chapter 112, 313, actions breach fiduciary duty and ethical obligations. My recommendations are to terminate the city manager for cause. Terminate under the provisions of the employment agreement, the city charter, city code, Florida law, under the documented failures, including neglect of duty, incompetence, and reckless failure to perform responsibilities. I believe the next step should be a legal preparation, and before going so, to affirm that these codes are applicable, not necessarily the city attorney in a position to state that we can terminate for cause and to recognize that these are the sections to terminate for cause, direct the legal counsel to provide this confirmation, guidance, and to draft any necessary documents, and consider a termination resolution ensuring actions taken in compliance with the employment agreements and applicable laws. Three, I think we should appoint an interim city manager, transition immediately, and to stabilize operations and restore public confidence until the city can hire a city manager. And next, we should implement oversight mechanisms, consider immediate actions, further investigations, policies, and procedures to adopt to prevent future administrative failures and ensure accountability. And last, would be to hire a new city manager to restore operational integrity by utilizing the services from a party, from a third party to perform a search and hire a city manager to address these deficiencies. The decision to terminate the city manager with cause is necessary to uphold the principles of transparency, accountability, and effective governance. This action is essential to restore trust in our city's leadership and ensure the best outcomes for the residents of Cape Canaveral. It is very difficult to take this position. Todd and I, to this day, have a very good line of communication. We clearly do not agree. There are a lot of narratives that have been shared that are simply not true. And if you sit in the shoes of any of these council members, there are more layers. And when you dig in, I have a responsibility to apply what I rose my right hand to uphold. This is not a quick knee-jerk reaction. This has been going on longstanding. And if today was about counting public comments or taking the emotions of what was said, that we would not have enough room in here to hold the people. I did not make one social media post. I tried to draw as little attention to this as possible by simply focusing on what was true, what was factual. It's not a comfortable position to be on the city council, but the truth is the truth, no matter who says it. I live here, I go to sleep here, I'm gonna have to wake up with you residents tomorrow and the next day. And I promise you, if you take the time to look into what we've went through, you will see that we are on the right side of this issue, and we have a moral and ethical responsibility long after forgiveness and mercy has been shown. That is all I wanted to say. I know that sometimes I can go off and been criticized for talking long, and I would agree with you. I'll conclude there and allow the council to speak if they choose, in no particular
Thank you. Since joining this council, one thing that I have, I had campaigned on, is the fact that I want the focus on our constituents. The people that pay taxes in this city are who we are to be serving. So I want fair treatment of citizens. I want codes, resolutions, ordinances, and state statutes to be applied fairly to all. In the cases of Jackson Street and Fillmore, this was not the case. And I actually am someone that had a property here that it wasn't, we, I, we had issues with it a long time ago. So there were things that have occurred over time, and these things need to be cleaned up. This is a very, very difficult and unpleasant place to be at, at this time. I think all of us actually like Todd and our city manager. He's a, a nice person that's very, it's hard not to like him. But when you talk about leadership, there's plenty of studies in organizational behavior that have said, leadership is top-driven-down. And so, all of the things within your staff and that type of thing are driven by the attitude of your leaders. We've had a great opportunity to clean up some of these things, as far as when our city manager came in. Unfortunately, those things did not happen. It doesn't take the accountability away as far as being a leader. I think selective enforcement is probably one of the worst things that can happen to a person, whether you're a business owner, whether you're a residential property owner, whether it's at your condo or anything like that. Most of us have run into that at some point in our lives. If we are going to stand and serve our community, we have to be prepared to equally apply the law as far as code, our city charter, ordinances, state statutes, and ensure that we address when selective enforcement is occurring within our city. It is very difficult being up here with this particular topic. Unfortunately, we've had some of those things that we're looking at. We've been looking at this, not for a short amount of time, we've been looking at this for over a year. During that year, because of the amount of time that it took to investigate this and look at all these things, and there is not resolution, there are still things happening. We still have two properties that have problems. We can't afford, as a city, as citizen taxpayers, to not be able to issue building permits, to be able to work with the developers or builders that come into our city and help them successfully build a structure. We, we can't have code enforcement applied to only some within the city. That is when we, as a council, if we allow that to happen, we are not doing our jobs for the citizens. I think our staff has a lot of talent. I think this city is blessed with that talent. I think that unfortunately, these things have occurred for quite some time, and in order for us to fix the things that are occurring, we have to address these things now, as unfortunate as it is, and difficult as it is, and how unpleasant it is. It's not pleasant for us sitting up here either, but we owe it to our citizens to ensure that the law is applied equally to all.
Thank you. Mayor President Kellum?
Yes, thank you. I, I agree that this is a very heavy time for us as a council. We all like Todd, I like Todd, he's, he's helped me personally with things, I think he's a really good person. Again, we have obligations to our taxpayers to make sure that the city runs the way it should be and we're financially responsible. The way I looked at this, and, and it's been weighing heavy on my mind for a while, I, I said to myself, let's ask why. And I'm gonna go through this, bear with me. So why did the residents feel that they had no recourse but to bring their problem to the council? Why? Why, when a open letter to the building department, starting with Chris Robinson and everyone else was there, was given to, Todd was also copied on it, from the Ellie Mae project on August 14, 2023, nothing was addressed until it was brought to the council in 2024. Then we started an investigation. Why didn't an investigation start on April 14, 2023, when everything was outlined in this letter that was happening with that property? Why, I'm, and I don't know if the, we suddenly had an employee engagement survey yesterday. And I just thought the timing of that was a little odd, but any, I looked through, it was very informational, it helped a lot. But why, you know, it was said many times in that survey from the employees that everything was good until 2024. 2024 is when this was brought to the council. And by code, I'm sorry, the, the problems were brought to the council for some kind of action. The staff of the building department was not able to or did not address their concerns. Why, when in code, the council, council by code has the right to call witnesses, ask questions, do investigations when needed, and when we did that, we were harassing the staff. We were just trying to get the right answers. Why council asked, why, when council asked several times in budget meetings, in workshops, if these problems in the enforcement department and the building department, if you need more people, we will find the money and get you more people? Why did they never add another person or figure out what, what would be needed? At that point, I believe that the city manager saw the problems, knew there was problems, and should have stepped in and said, we need- and should have stepped in and said, we need more people. Why Mike German, a building official that was employed here for nine years, did not understand the codes, did not apply the codes that were needed to Fillmore Avenue? I just, you know, these are things that weigh heavy on my mind, and I just don't know, you know, why, another why is why can't, when council asked for metrics, standard of operations, employee handbook, for months into years, it didn't happen? Why Canaveral Estates now, today, still isn't getting answers on flooding and things that are important to them? Again, the building department and code enforcement, a problem that in our city, the short-term rentals, why were we not told that the company we hired to oversee the short-term rentals did have no knowledge of how to take care of short-term rentals, how to oversee that? Why did the council not know that? I just think that, you know, these are just things that weigh heavy on my mind, and it's not an easy decision, it's a very hard decision. I just think that it's time to move on. And last and not least, why in section 2-101 of the powers and duties of the city manager, it says, "appoint when deemed necessary for the good of service to suspend, remove all city employees, and appoint administrative officers provided for, by under the charter." Why did we not fire the people that were responsible for the problem, and then we paid them severance pay? I don't understand that. And that's the things that the mayor has spelled out in the reasons why this has to happen, I think, is where we need to go. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmember Willis, would you like to?
Again, this is a very difficult thing. It's difficult to sit here, it's difficult to hear both sides of the arguments that we've had to listen to. I personally have dealt with Todd quite a bit on these issues, and he, in my mind, has made every effort to correct with the employees, with procedures. He's made those efforts. And I am all for working with the city manager to correct it and to continue. I do not feel that, at this point, we should be firing the city manager, and will not support firing with cause at this time.
I agree that this is a difficult situation. Obviously, I am in support of our city manager, Todd Morley. You know, people have spoke about different issues that they've had and different things like that. But like the mayor had said, there is so much more involved in this than maybe your side, or your story, or your situation. There is so much more involved. So, you know, one of the things that I, well, I'm upset with, that Todd did not, you know, once Todd found out what problems were going on, he dealt with them. He corrected with the SOPs, he dealt with the people, he corrected it, he did what he needed to do. As far as our situation, when you're upset about filing or firing the people with severance, that's an administrative decision. That's not any of our business that we need to be in. That's not city council's business. That's administrative. We may not-
Please, we have to maintain order. Let councilmember Davis speak, please. Thank you.
My understanding, what I believe, it is up to the city manager. It's his choice, you may not like it or whatever, but it's his choice to do. So you can disagree or whatever, there's all the different things. As far as, you know, you talked about the survey. The one thing the survey said is that the council is getting involved in, I don't know if you guys have seen the survey, if not, I suggest you look at the survey and read it. There are copies in the back. It states that city council is getting involved in administrative and getting way involved beyond our responsibilities. That's one thing that we, excuse me, I don't know who's commenting-
If we could, please-
But I'm gonna ask if any comments are made again, and you can't respect my opinion. I've listened to you, I've listened to everybody. I may disagree, I may agree, but if you're gonna keep making comments, I'm gonna ask the deputy to ask you to step out, because I am entitled to my decisions, or my opinion. So, you know, the one thing, yes, there was issues made on these two properties, but nothing was done intentional. Everybody is saying, or not everybody, certain people are saying, oh, the city, you know, put records in there, or they filed records, there was no transparency. Nobody in this city would, or a city employee, would intentionally do that. They've already had a comment, or, well, the person, I won't say, that was fired also commented that he'd put it in there, Todd had nothing to do with it. So, you know, everybody's jumping to conclusions about what's going on, when everybody doesn't know the whole story. So I just, I could keep going on, but I'm gonna say that I'm 100% supportive of the city manager. He's done his job, he's been willing to work with the people. If you read the survey, you will find the issues with the staff and what their true feelings are and how they feel about what's been going on. I have sat back and I have stood up for these employees that have gotten bullied, belittled. I've gotten bullied on this dais, I've gotten ignored on this dais. So I will stand up for this city staff, because I do not believe that anytime they have intentionally gone out to do anything wrong, oh, I think I'll come in today and I'll hide some information, or I'll do this. Nobody did that intentionally. And if, you know, you're saying that there's certain ones that are here, or that did, they're no longer here. So, you know, it's time to start a new, start, fresh start. We have all new staff, we're not all new, but we have new staff. We have a wonderful city manager that we used to, council used to be able to work with, you know, and we should be able to work with him again. And again, like you said, there's 100 problems in this city. Yes, you're important, I'm not saying your problem isn't important, but there are, you know, a lot of other problems out there. And if they didn't get back to you, I'm sure there's a reason, or a priority, or whatever the case may be, I can't answer to that. But to sit here, I think it has been vindictive, what has been done to this, to the city manager and to other staff, how the staff has been treated, how council has been treated at times, and I totally disagree with it. I think we should keep the city manager on and keep moving forward with the city. It's gonna cost a lot of money. We've already wasted, I'm not gonna say wasted, we've already put forward a lot of money involved in this. There's times that, Mr. Mayor, you have said you're willing to do whatever, and, you know, unopened number, and you wanted to put an open number for this. You can't count, you can't vote on an open number when you don't know if it's gonna be $5,000, or $500, or whatever it may be. You, you know, so I'm just not gonna go on. I support the city manager, and I am appalled by some of the actions taken and misrepresentation by this city council.
City attorney, I just wanna check in with you. As far as the employment agreement provisions, 11(c)(3) and 11(c)(4), under the termination for cause section, I'm confirming it is as it reads. Those are some of the reasons that the city council has the authority to terminate for cause.
Yes, under section 11, so paragraph C, it does state the potential reasons for terminating the city manager with cause. And as you laid out in your memorandum, 11(c)(3), neglect of duty, is explicitly stated in the employment contract as a basis for cause. In addition, 11(c)(4), involving the reckless failure to carry out the duties assigned under the city charter, or state, or federal statute, is also a basis for cause.
Thank you, counsel. Any questions for the city attorney? City manager, would you like to make any statement? Floor is yours.
Yes, I would, thank you. Two hours into the meeting, and I'm finally able to say something. Two things I wanna put on the record. First is a 14th Amendment due process issue. Let me specify what I mean by that. I work for the city council, not any individual city council member. So the directives that come to me come from three or more city council members, not one person, including the mayor. This document that the mayor handed out and read tonight, this is the first time I've seen this. Keep in mind, this is not a council document, this is a mayor document. So this is the closest we've come to giving me notice of the specified charges. So I have a problem about how this proceeding has occurred, because I have not been provided notice of the specified charges from the city council. This is a 14th Amendment due process issue. It's very serious, and this is not an emergency. That's the first thing I wanna put on the record. The second thing I wanna put on the record, because of statements made in the previous public meeting, it is obvious that there have been communications about this outside of the Open Meetings Act. And this meeting is being conducted in violation of the Open Meetings Act. I wanna be clear, this meeting is in violation of the Open Meetings Act and should be stopped immediately. However, if the city attorney does not advise the city council to stop it, I will proceed.
City attorney, we've heard two issues of the 14th Amendment due process issue and Open Meeting Act. Who helped bring-
Maybe the city manager can explain what he means by that this proceeding needs to stop because there's a sunshine law issue. My understanding is that pursuant to city code, a request was made on Friday by the mayor to request a special meeting, and that went through the city clerk's office for determination of whether or not there was a majority of the city council to be present at this meeting. It's my understanding that there were a majority of council members that were willing to attend. The facts prove out that five of them are actually here to attend this special meeting, and it's my understanding that the meeting was noticed. So explain why the sunshine law, there's a sunshine law issue, I guess is my point.
There were previous, in the previous meeting, there were comments made by the council, a council member, and you can hear it in the recording, where the council member says, I have my three votes. This was before a motion was made, a second was called, or the question was called? That indicates there's a sunshine law violation, and that violates the Open Meetings Act.
I would like to add to that as well, because I was the one that was told that he has three votes, and he doesn't care about my opinion. In other words, he didn't want to hear my opinion on that, because he has his three votes, so I wanna put my-
And the question has yet to be called.
I mean, that goes to a different issue than whether or not this meeting can actually be held, because it was not noticed properly. I got the impression from your first comment that you had concerns that this meeting should not be held. I haven't heard any information indicating that the sunshine law, in terms of providing proper notice, was not-
No, the notice is a separate issue. My 14th Amendment issue is about the specified charges.
So you're clarifying a separate accusation, you know, I mean, that's your, I guess that's your conclusion and opinion. You know, I can't really address that accusation. I'm just addressing whether or not this meeting was held in accordance with the city council's procedures and the sunshine-
I'm not questioning that at all.
Okay, all right. Well, that's clarification for the record. So, Mary, he's raising a separate issue regarding, you know, sunshine. That's correct.
So do we have an issue with the 14th Amendment due process, city attorney, in your opinion?
That's a nice conclusory statement, on what basis is there a due process violation? I mean, the manager, under the employment agreement, serves at will of the city council. The city charter also says he's at will. There's no procedure under the city charter or the city code for this type of situation. I mean, you're at will, you have an opportunity to respond fully to what's being stated, Todd, you know, and you have that opportunity, so I'm not quite sure what the due process issue is.
Let me clarify, I'll state it again. It appears that I'm being terminated for cause. That cause has yet to be presented to me by the specified charges. This is the closest we've seen what specified charges are, and this is not a council document, this is a mayor document. This is the first I've seen this, and it doesn't even represent the council's opinion. That's the due process issue. This is the first I've seen it.
Okay.
With all due respect, in order for me to get the council's opinion, one person has to bring it in. That was me. A vote would give you the council's opinion, however it goes each individually. Prior to the last meeting, prior to bringing this up, there was a 30-minute recess. Todd, do you remember when I asked if you had a moment to speak with me?
I sure do.
We went into my office, we shut the door. I said, I believe it's a time for change. Do you remember that?
Yep, that's not notice.
I'm not claiming it is anything, I'm just trying to state that you and I had a talk. I stated the reasons why in that verbal meeting, and believed that you deserved to have some sort of awareness, you could choose to resign. I felt strongly that these were issues that were applicable to your agreement. You disagreed. We then agreed, I said, well, I can't make a decision by myself. We came out, and the meeting that we're referencing last month, we saw what we saw. In that meeting, I stated some of those reasons. Since then, I spoke with the city attorney very briefly to just understand his roles and responsibilities in this special meeting. We are now at the next part of the story. We are sitting in the meeting with my first formal, written, proposed charges, after verbally stating them to you, and then stating them to the council, and today putting them in writing. So as long as we are on the same page that happened, I'm not disputing what you're saying, I'm not agreeing to what you're saying. But I think it's important to know, and for the public to know, that these were stated in confidence with you at that meeting briefly, and today they were formalized to try and respect what I believe is following our code and ordinances, and I think affirmed by our city attorney. But please-
Please, the council, I'll continue then.
Well, I wanted to take, so the 14th Amendment due process, we've got that, the sunshine law statement, just to clarify that, the, you're maintaining that this meeting is outside, this meeting right now is outside of the sunshine law? The one that we-
This topic, this topic violates the sunshine law, having this meeting based on the statements you said.
Okay, so when a city manager in another city comes in, there's nothing on the agenda, and during the reports, a council member, we've seen it, makes a motion to terminate because the agreement that we signed says right up front, as our city attorney, I believe, said, but I think it's important, from my understanding and what I implied, is that at any time, at any time, at any moment, at will, we can make this decision. And so you're saying that these, this document that I provided as an addendum should have been a part of the packet and noticed out to the public?
I'm just saying, this is the first time I've even gotten something- I'm just saying, this is the first time I've even gotten something close to notice. But you know what? We could short-circuit if you just answer this question, Mayor.
I just want to follow the law, and you're making some claims that I want to make sure we're, we're on the same page.
I can ask a very pointed question, if it helps. Have you spoken to any other council members and received positive votes that they would vote to terminate me prior to this meeting?
No.
I have a question about that, Mayor. I have a question on that.
Do you have any more questions?
No, I have a statement to read.
I do have a statement. So, I, we had not taken a vote. We really hadn't-
Well, hold on. I want to take order. Councilmember Jackson asked to speak. The city manager had the floor. City manager, you've raised an issue of the Fourteenth Amendment sunshine law, and then I entertained your question that I think was highly inappropriate, but let's keep it open here.
Okay, I'm ready to continue.
Yes, please.
I have responses regarding the January 24, 2024, meeting about Jackson and Fillmore. I'd like to hand this out so everybody has a copy.
What is it?
It's my responses. I went over them largely last time we met, and there's one from the city clerk. But I want to read it aloud again.
Before that, we go to that section, you will have, I think there was a relevant question perhaps to the last statement from Councilmember Jackson and Councilmember Davis. I believe you had a statement. I don't want to move on to the next topic until they have a chance to clarify.
Thank you, Mayor. At the point that that statement was made, we had all, as council members, discussed how we felt about this. So, it would not have been a piece of information that we all didn't know. We all had made statements as far as the topic. So, that was known. It was not, it was something that we had, it was something that we all had discussed it. We all had made comments, every one of us sitting up here, by the time that statement was made. And if you go back and watch the video, you will see that, that that statement was made after each one of us spoke in regards to it.
The word you used was votes.
I don't recall the statement we're talking about, and I just, I think it's, it's pretty absurd, because-
I agree with my point.
I have an honor to serve with, I believe, all five council members here trying to walk heel to toe. And so, carry on.
I'm ready to move on.
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, Councilmember Davis, thank you.
So, when you told me you had your votes and my opinion didn't matter, you didn't care about my opinion. So, why would you sit there and say, if you're willing to listen to all five of us, that my opinion didn't matter? You've said you have three votes and my opinion didn't matter. Later, which off the record, when I tried to explain to you why I wanted the meeting held at night instead of during the day because I work and I'd like to be here, you told me I can leave and just go to sleep.
You said you were tired. I think this is getting off track.
I just wanted to say that I-
I'm not. I think I really, I look forward to, so it was the statement that I made at 10:45 at night?
I believe by the comment you made to me that my opinion didn't matter, you had three votes. I took it also, as well as it had been previously discussed.
Councilmember Davis, your opinion matters.
Well, you said it.
The people said so. I think that you wanting to go home, whatever was stated, late-night meetings, get, your opinion matters, and I think my record speaks for itself. I've always tried to honor your time and the hard work that you put in. Yes, and I, thank you.
Will you listen to Todd?
Thank you.
Document that I handed out is taking all of the, copy and pasted from all the months of minutes where the January 24th item was discussed. And you'll see I've got highlighted portions there. They responded to, with my response on the right-hand side. So, the first one from January was obtain and distribute a city council a building permit inspections report. That was, response was submitted on March 19, 2024. Second one was to obtain the engineering report from Kimley Horn on February 20, 2024. Kimley Horn proposal for several engineering services was approved. February 26, staff walked the site with Kimley Horn engineer. So, that was done. Number three, request plans and confirmation on date for FPL to remove overhead lines and reinstall lines underground. January 30, 2024, FPL removed the overhead lines, placing them underground on April 11, 2024. FPL removed the pole on May 20, 2024, and they indicated the rebar was already at that location prior to their work, and they're not responsible for its removal. Number four, utilizing engineering report above, exercise available remedies to gain compliance, and you'll have to turn the page for this response. Status updates provided to council at every meeting and at other times. Number five, city manager and city attorney present any findings and/or opportunities. That was, May 7 was my report of findings. On July 10, the opportunities to improve were submitted. I can't speak for the city attorney's response on that matter. Discussion ensued regarding properties at 116, 118, and 120 Jackson Avenue. This one required number one, 1 through 5 also. Number one, provide a report showing all actions and correspondence related to code enforcement. That item was placed in Laserfish on May 14, 2024 and responded to. Item two, create and distribute administrative procedures. That was under development. However, that has since been sent to city council. The code enforcement administrative procedures were received, I think approximately two weeks ago. Number three, for our city code enforcement employees, provide a listing of certifications and continued education. That's submitted, placed in Laserfish on June 11, 2024, and submitted to council on May 21 prior to that. Number four, distribute a monthly BSNA report of all code enforcement cases, open code enforcement cases. That report started in May 2024, and that has been a very useful document because we did put metrics into that where we can now track all code enforcement cases by date from the time a complaint comes in to the time it's investigated, from the time a courtesy notice goes out to the time a notice violation goes out. All those numbers are generated through the BSNA program, printed out, and we now can use that as a metrics tool to monitor code enforcement. It's been very handy, very useful, and that's now how code enforcement is run. Number five, present any findings and opportunities. Again, the report of findings was submitted on May 7, and the opportunities was July 10. Moving forward, in February, there's another meeting. Task order was approved. We talked about that. March, there was another meeting. We held the continuing discussion and talked about how remedying all these issues of these properties will take close to a year. In April, discussion was held at the regular meeting. Report of findings was under development in the month of April. Moving on to the April meeting, the special city council meeting, it was scheduled and held on April 22. I requested to meet with city council on May 7 to present that report of findings, and that was approved. Staff presented the building inspection report that time. Moving on to the next highlight, city manager instructed staff to have FPL confirm the line locations and burial depth. Further down in that, you see the BSNA report of the city's current code enforcement cases. Again, that's all covered previously. Conclusions and recommendations report. Skipping forward to May 7, council reached consensus to allow the city manager to present the report of findings. It was, the report of findings was reviewed in detail. John Picar was contacted as city council requested and responded that verbal approval of the site work was given to the building official. He indicated, however, the vast majority of projects had written approvals to the building department. Regarding the rocks in the swale complaint dated 5/24/23, the reason it was new information in the report of findings is only because it was information obtained during the course of my preparation of the report of findings. The code enforcement officer handling the case indicated to me and his, and his manager that it was information that he had stored outside of BSNA. The information was uploaded to BSNA in order to keep all information in one place. When confronted with Mrs. Schaller's statement that the date could not be correct as the rocks were delivered several days after 5/24/23, that code enforcement officer said that he was sure of the date. Next, on May 24, city council was given access to BSNA as they requested. That code enforcement officer's last day was June 21. I'm just going chronologically through. The department director's last day was July 15. Moving on to the June meeting, we talked about requesting consensus regarding if council wants to have a meeting in July, what preparation I could do for that, provide an estimation of how long it would take to resolve issues based on the presented recommendations for Fillmore and Jackson avenues. The Fillmore fieldwork completion time cannot be determined, it was stated. Council reached consensus to schedule another special meeting, and that was held on July 10. At that point, the council accepted the completion of the city manager's recommendations. Until this time, importantly, city council and staff were working under Mr. Whitaker's assertion, that he was the developer, that he would be completing the work at Fillmore. However, due to the length of time with no forward progress, the city council changed course and began to pursue a demand letter. We can skip to the next page. In July, on July 31, city manager held a meeting with Mr. Whitaker, his attorney, the project engineer, city staff members, city engineer. The topics of discussion were the council's coming demand letter and a path toward completion on the Fillmore townhomes. Following this meeting, the city attorney and Mr. Whitaker's attorney held a number of discussions over the next five months. In September, council reached consensus for the mayor to have meetings with the city manager and city attorney and city engineers, and city staff is needed in order to find, to help define his goals and outcomes at a future special meeting. There being no forward progress, on September 17, the demand letter was forwarded. September 25, at the recommendations of the city attorney, the city manager forwarded the demand letter to the Fillmore Townhome unit owners, adding, as instructed by the city attorney, "The city is not at liberty to provide any additional comments about the letter at this time." In November, city council met and city attorney offered to meet with council individually regarding Fillmore Avenue status and confirmed that no lawsuit had been filed, no action was taken. December, December 17, the mayor, city manager, and IT staff held an online meeting with representatives from BSNA. The meeting focused on reviewing the capabilities of the system and questions and answers related to document storage, in an effort to assure no utility conflicts were in the as-yet unconstructed drainage swale in Fillmore Townhomes. On January 6, the city manager and city engineer met with representatives from FPL to determine the location and depth of underground FPL utilities. As a result, FPL indicated a need to adjust the location of the underground utilities. The work was begun on January 16, but was interrupted by the discovery of an underground swimming pool in the easement area. City engineer documented the discovery and provided two options. My office is currently requesting Kimley Horn evaluate and provide additional options. City manager's office is currently working to schedule a similar onsite assessment of the Bright House utilities. In closing, I met with Mrs. Schaller on January 8, 2025, and asked her if there was anything else that she thought could be done to bring this item to closure. She stated the damage was done, and all that could be done was to ensure that code enforcement customers do not feel targeted. I said that code enforcement policies have been implemented to ensure that all violations and compliances are well documented, and that robust reporting and review is designed to assure that timeframes do not make code enforcement customers feel targeted. Additionally, as relates to the code officer's statement about Cowboy complaining about rocks in the swale on 5/24/23, that comment was either purposely false or inaccurately recorded. As you may recall, that statement was also previously stricken and notated as stricken due to lack of corroborating evidence. As for the Fillmore Townhomes relying on Mr. Whitaker during the first half of 2024 to complete the work proved fruitless. In July, council directed we move forward with the demand letter. Since that time, the completion has been a pending legal matter. Along the way, process improvements have been made. Of the employees directly involved, none remain employed by the city, with the exception of me. Employees who have inherited those roles have been informed of the mistakes that were made, which cannot be repeated. Formalized code enforcement standard operating procedures have been developed and have been forwarded to city council. In sum, I faithfully worked to complete all that council has requested I do regarding Fillmore and Jackson. These are and were two very difficult items. Jackson is done. Fillmore is awaiting utility rework and a council decision. I respectfully submit that council needs to make a decision on the Fillmore utility work to be done and then close this item. Also, I would like to add that I have advised from beginning, and I believe the city attorney has as well, city council should not have gotten involved in the Fillmore project. Even though these were extremely unfortunate errors by the city's building official and city engineer, the city council should never have inserted itself into a civil matter over construction defects. At the mayor's urging, the city council did just that, putting my office in a no-win situation. There has been no neglect. I've not failed to follow instructions. I've not been discourteous or disrupting to the work environment. I have performed all of my job duties in a reasonable manner, and I believe that I've done everything the city council has asked me to do. The correct analogy is, you can't put me in a no-win situation and expect me to win. If council chooses to terminate tonight, that is your prerogative. There is no cause. I would say to the employees here, I think you're a wonderful group of people. Every one of you is very professional, very dedicated, as much as I am. And I applaud your efforts, and I will accept council's, whatever council decides to do. I just would argue that there is no cause because I followed everything city council asked me to do, and I don't work for one council member, Mayor.
I have many, many positive things to say about Todd Morley. I do not agree that those items are complete, but that's okay, and I think that's a big reason why we're here. The vote was a 5-0 vote, not one council member. I did not, and I think I can confidently speak on behalf of each council member, none of us wanted to be involved in that. So, that accusation that this is us meddling in administration, or worse, one member of this body meddling in administration-
Mayor.
Is, is, is a bit far. The truth is, the residents, the businesses, and the history goes on and on, from Surf Drive to Oak Lane, to what I would say, and I don't use this word often, legitimate victims of the wrong side of the issue. Does it mean that these people were not making mistakes? Does it mean that our city was completely flawed? No, there was effort. There was diplomacy. There was professionalism at times, but there was no management. It was a management style that can work, that I communicated at link with Todd, needed to depend on different actions. It was not working, and it went on for years behind the scenes. And if, we do not want to get involved, but when a resident has no hope, that's why we exist. Where else do you go when you can't get a problem solved? The administration could not solve problems that were not civil problems. That is outright insulting. Those problems were on private property, but those problems, the audacity to say that is very, very troubling.
Mayor, I just want to clarify-
There are clear flaws on our city's inability to do the procedures, not a perfectionist. Highly unreasonable actions were taken. And then, like most, and these two instances of Jackson and Fillmore were rare people. They fought back. They did not give up. I have not been able to answer many phone calls from people, and I did not answer the phone calls from the Fillmore Avenue residents and the Jackson residents many times, but they did not stop. And it's not because the squeaky wheel gets fixed only, it's because they were significant. And when we dug in, when you followed the procedures, I went as I was asked by our city manager to do, and the former city manager, is bring it to us. If you go back and watch the meetings, I've stated this all through 2024, and I think it's a big reason why we had a 5-0 vote, to direct the council, the city staff. So, those narratives are not the truth. That is a great example-
Mayor, you've misheard me.
Okay.
The 5-0 vote, that's the document I read. That was 5-0. I did everything the 5-0 vote asked me to do. That was my point.
And well, my, my point before saying that was, I do not agree that you did everything.
These, these are the things. This is everything. There's nothing outside of this.
That, that is, that is your, your opinion. It was a council request, and the council will say. I can't say they're complete. A majority of this council will determine whether those are complete or not. I respect and understand and even agree that some of those might be complete. And I fully understand that in your opinion, on behalf of the administration, you believe they're complete.
I believe I've done my very best job.
I don't think it's worth any time to talk about why they're not complete today, and I think this is a real-life view of what it's like. I think this is a real-life view of what it's like serving the city of Cape Canaveral.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
They, they are.
It's a real-life view, folks.
They are not, they are not, they are not complete, and I don't think it's worth the time to go through them because we've spent exhausting. Have improvements been made? Absolutely. Have we learned a lot? Absolutely. The wording of this is why the narrative exists. The wording of the report of findings, everyone wins. It is, it is not an accurate story of what happened, and I believed and I maintain today that until we can identify the real root problems of these issues, we will always apply the wrong solution. And so today, it's not comfortable. It's not comfortable to be here, but I've seen too many people that I work for in this community on the wrong side of the issue. Theirs problems didn't get resolved. I watched our city manager direct directors, copy me appropriately, and, and, and direct them to do something. He gave them instructions to get back. Weeks would go by, nothing. Then another, I have to intervene, anything going on? Now rinse and repeat, over and over again, and time goes by. Then the emails would get firm, and it would say, please communicate on a weekly basis with them or give them some sort of update. Those actions might happen, and many times they would not happen. And there's a big difference in responding and resolving. The city administration resolved a lot of problems, but all responses are not resolutions. You have been acknowledged, we are responding to you, but I cannot sit up here and say, nor do I have the authority to say that these are complete. This council will vote and decide when these are complete, in my opinion, and I ask for a 5-0 council vote, again, to work independently with you and not, and to respect the interference clause of our, of our charter and code that we follow, and reaffirmed it on multiple occasions. So I appreciate your open and transparency today, and I thought we've always had very diplomatic meetings, one-on-one, but it is not to say that I did not leave feeling like things were not resolved and that you clearly understood how to resolve them. And the reason I'm here today is the actions, or therefore, lack of action that was taken to resolve undisputable values, honesty, truth, transparency, and the effort that we have to go to, to get access to things that you, no city staff member, no member of this council, the public, the people own. My work product up here, these computers, this building we sit in, any software that we operate, and for reasonable cause, if we want to see it, it, it does not help to delay. That is not how we restore trust. And then when we get in there, the rest of the story comes together. I did not bring an exhaustive list. I handled this professionally, one-on-one, and I don't like the narrative as if this is a mayor who has just swooped down, interfered, and it needs to get out. If, your feelings are your feelings, that's, you have the right to that. But the record speaks for itself that I was not interfering. I was a pure, to only work through the city manager on all items. And so it's important, because I got to go that way to go to bed. And that's, that's the Cape Canaveral. And when I wake up, they'll be here. And, and that, that narrative, that, that is not accurate. Thank you for providing this. It, it is, there, there's, there's no comfortable way to do this, but I've tried to do this in the most honorable, open, transparent way. I did not want to have to come to this level, but the decision to not resign, to not accept and take responsibility for the faults is why we're here today. And I can't look a resident in the eye and say, I'm doing my best for you if I do not hold and take these. These aren't suggestions. The code and the charter and the constitution are not recommendations. If we don't like a part of it, we don't get to just pick what we like and pick what we don't like. We don't get to say, well, that didn't make sense. And we also don't get to say, well, on basic common sense items, I did not have a policy to tell me to do that, so I did not do that. We saw there's many instances where no policy existed and exercised options. It is a big day, it's a hard day, but I am optimistic on the future of Cape Canaveral. And I do believe that we might take a step back, but I will not stop working to take two steps forward, and I think that's what 2024 was about, and 2025 is about going forward. Councilmember Davis.
I asked the city manager, did you say at one point you discussed with the city attorney that it was a civil matter?
I said I believe the city attorney has also advised the council members of that, but I, I'm not certain. He would have to answer that question.
Can I ask, can you?
Oh, you can ask me, because I never said it was a civil matter.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're talking about Fillmore? I never said that that was solely a Fillmore.
No, I'm asking now, is, do you consider that a civil matter between?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Another glimpse of what it's like to be there. This is the information I get, this is this opinion. Councilmember Davis?
No, I was just going to ask, because with the city matter, you know, it was between the contractor and the homeowner. The homeowner bought as-is, and we got involved. You're always considered, you know, spending money, and with the budget, when we went below rollback, we don't have any extra money to spend on anything, and the city will, I'm not even going to go there. So I had a, I had them put together. So the amount of money that we have spent on Fillmore and Jackson is $159,387. And, you know, a lot of that to me, that's why I was asking. A lot of that at the beginning was between the contractor and the homeowner, and I, you know, I was just concerned about us getting involved in places that we may not have gotten to, need to be involved in. Yes, if there was issues, we needed to address that, but we didn't need to address all of this. So I just wanted to make it aware that we have spent basically $160,000.
That's what happens when mistakes are made. Thank you. City manager, is there anything else that you'd like to state?
Excuse me, you put words in my mouth. That is not what I said. So you can say that, but don't say that mistakes are made, because I'm not saying that all this, I'm saying some mistakes were made.
That's right.
They've been corrected, but we have spent $160,000 on a rollback, below rollback budget. So there's not much money, you want to do this and do that. We don't, city doesn't have the money now, so.
We're going to move forward, council. Any further discussion on this item?
Um, yes, Mr.
Yes, Mayor Tim Kellum?
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of things. When, when we started this and Dave Dickey, community, director of community, I had a discussion with Todd, and we talked about Mr. Dickey's shortfalls and what, what the problem was. And then his solution was to move him to another department instead of firing him, which he should have been fired. Because he, as, as Todd said, didn't follow up on things. There was under the, under the number five of the section 2101, for the good of service. He was not doing the good of service. And, and his answer was to move him to a different department. I don't think that was right. And then my question, Todd, maybe you can answer this, is, on August 14th, when you and the whole building department got the letter from Ms. Schuler's attorney, August 14th, 2023, why wasn't an investigative, an investigation of all this started then? Why did we wait until it was brought to council in 2024?
Just because you get a letter doesn't mean you start a full-fledged investigation. You task your directors to deal with it. That's what a manager does.
But they didn't.
It turns out they did not effectively deal with it, but that's where you start.
But then when they didn't, you didn't?
Um, I disagree. May, you may not like the length of time it took, but I certainly did address it.
In 2024, when it was brought to the council?
That never got addressed.
Um, you know, I, like I said, this is a very hard decision. I think that we have been, as the mayor said, benefited the doubt, gave him time, we trusted him, we gave him 11% raise, we gave him another raise during all this that was happening. We did have confidence in, in his ability, but when we fired the employees, or we didn't fire them, and gave them severance pay, that was kind of, I, you know, like Councilmember Davis says, it's an administrative thing. The money that we gave them is taxpayers' money. So, you know, I, we answer to the people, and, you know, when the people come to us and say, look, I'm not getting any results, like the people on Carl, and we had, I brought them, the people from Carl, to the city, to meet with the city, because they could not get the answers they were looking for. And it was very concerning for the construction of this house, and I'm not going to get into all of that, but they couldn't get the answers they wanted. And then after the meeting was over, they still didn't get the answers they wanted. Joe, on Long Point, the retention pond, which we talked about several times, several years, we just had a CIP come up recently, or in the last budget, where we were going to pave Long Point. And I said, wait a minute, why are we going to pave it when we haven't done the retention pond? I mean, and that's, again, taxpayers' money. And we haven't told the people on, or helped the people on Long Point with the retention pond. There's just things that have, you know, it's not just Fillmore, it's not just Jackson. I don't know how many people I've talked to about code enforcement who just said, I gave up, I don't bother with them anymore. It's been a long, long, hard road for code enforcement. And again, you know, council offered to hire more people, that's what we need to do. And again, I think that the city manager should have said, enough, guys, we need more people.
We did. We hired one more.
Yeah, af, not when we, two years ago, when we offered, please, let's get another person in there.
Did it in the last budget session.
Mayor Tim, anything else?
That's all.
Any other comments, council? City?
Could I ask, I hate to put her on the spot, but Natalie, when people get severance pay, is that, with your experience in the past, is that a common thing for people that have left to get severance pay? And is it a liability? I mean, are we open to a possible lawsuit if we deny severance pay to some people?
Well, hold on, we're going to need it, if we're going to ask, Natalie, I apologize to interrupt you, if you don't mind, would you mind coming forward on the, the record? And we, we should work through the city manager for this, opposed to asking directors?
I was going to say, sorry, I put you on the spot, but I didn't know which one. Yeah. I mean, are we open, subject to, I know each situation is a little different, but on, are, are we open to a lawsuit if the severance pay is denied for some that resigned or anything?
Unless you have a contractual arrangement. I mean, city employees don't have, I believe have a, have, have a basis for severance pay. But many times when there is a separation of employment, you know, the city manager who supervises those employees has the ability to, if, if, within his or her judgment, thinks severance pay is appropriate, you know, will try to negotiate a separation agreement. That's a judgment call, generally, you know, for city employees. And, you know, I mean, that's, that's it. Now, there's statutory limitations, right? Not to exceed six weeks. So there's.
Statutory limitations for?
Severance pay for employees without, yeah, without a, an employment contract.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
I just want to clarify, on the meeting that Mr. Morley had with Pegg, I was in attendance, and I discussed the fact that I thought the meeting would be a good idea. Mr. Morley agreed early December. He did get in touch with Pegg, and she was unable to do it until after the first of the year. But I was there in attendance with that meeting, and I had encouraged the city manager to have that meeting with, with Pegg, and he was willing to do that. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I hadn't heard that mentioned.
And I need to clarify one thing, the, the conversation on request, the text message that was brought up in the last meeting was absolutely relevant to the city manager. I needed to confirm that action was taken by the city manager. He could not produce that record. Those records, I do not know what the latest is, but, but the claim that city business is not done, and sometimes the outside folks will, will, will text a, a city employee on a city phone, but, you know, there's no initiating or outbound, that's, that's the furthest from the truth. There was a text initiated by the city manager regarding 100% city business, the lien. One lien of many liens, don't want to quibble over that, but that's why the text was, was brought up. That text wasn't lost. The last I checked, all texts were gone and all records. Have we confirmed or done any, taken any steps to recover those texts that I believe the last time we spoke on that government phone were not available or accessible? City manager?
My understanding is that those records can be obtained by the carrier. Now, when I turned my phone in, I did not ask the IT manager what he intended to do with my text messages. I wasn't aware that they would be deleted, I just got a new phone, handed in my own one. That's my answer.
Okay, and, and, but you did not, only the text messages were deleted, not your photographs? What about your contacts?
The photographs, the IT manager made those available to me in a separate folder.
Okay.
The contacts did migrate over to the new phone.
Okay. I do not understand how, thank you, Commander. I do not understand how contacts could come over, but the, the text could not?
I don't either.
And, okay, thank you for verifying that. I do have one card. We are at 8:48. We need to, I'm going to, to see you. Shannon, Dr. Roberts, we have, we have closed public comment, and I am concerned that if we reopen public comment, were you not here, Dr. Roberts, earlier? Did you come in late?
No, I was here, but I had to listen to what the dialogue was from the council and from, um.
Okay.
I would comment on the point I'm coming on.
Okay, let me make sure that Councilmember Davis is heard, and, and my only concern is that, you know, I try to be fair and equal and let, and close it and allow it, but one moment, I'll, I'll have to ask the council.
Yes, I would love to ask Mike from IT, I have a couple of questions for him, regarding the text messages. I have some questions on Mike.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And again, we should work through the city manager on asking directors any questions, if that's okay with the city manager.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Full transparency here, sir.
Thank you.
But, Mayor, Mike is not a director, I just want to correct you. He works for me.
That's right.
He's a manager. I just want to make that, he is not a director.
Thank you for the clarification.
There's questions about the text messages, and I would just like to ask Mike some questions.
Okay. I don't see Mike.
Is he here?
Yeah.
He's in the, he's in the meeting room.
I think he, he, he might.
He's for me.
Okay. Can, can?
Please come out.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mike, to pull you out of there, but I just have a couple of questions. At the January city council meeting, you explained, you know, that there was, and I, I apologize, I'm not an IT person, so I can't be technical with you, that there was a reason, you know, that there, the city had implicated, implemented, sorry, a policy that that would not hap, you know, how you transfer or whatever you do. My question is, did you advise city manager that his, he would lose those texts?
I don't recall.
You don't know?
No, I, I can tell you, though, that several months ago, we started looking into this. We started investigating processes to do this when the previous city clerk pointed out that we had a deficiency there. And at the time, as of now, we have contacted four different companies investigating and requesting. requesting quotes and procedures for how to go about archiving text messages on phones. And it's not the same as doing personal phones, because when you use government phone systems, the process is different, you don't use iCloud or any of the tools that are offered on personal phones.
But, and basically, any city employee could have the same issue with their phone, come up to you and say, Mike, my phone's not charging, oh, it's an old phone, let's get you a new phone, and then you transfer without them having knowledge that their text messages or anything else would be missing, and give them the opportunity to take a photo or do whatever they needed to do to preserve that, correct?
That's correct.
So it wasn't just Todd, and that he intentionally, you know, had his texts deleted, it would happen to any city employee, and they would have no idea that they're going to lose that information.
That's correct. At this time, what we've been doing since I've been here the last eleven months was to advise the person to take snapshots or screenshots in their phone. In this particular case, Mr. Morley has taken many of snapshots of these texts, and they are in his pictures folder.
But he might not have had a chance to do that before his phone died? I mean, just...
That is correct.
I mean, it's a hypothetical, we don't know either way, but he may not have had the chance to do that. So to say that he intentionally did it is not correct.
Oh, I would never say that, no.
Oh, no, I'm not saying you're going to say that, but just, you know, to say that he intentionally tried to get rid of this information or whatever is not correct, correct?
No, and in fact, there's plenty of evidence that he was doing screenshots of his, of his texts.
Okay, so I have issues with that, that that's one of your reasons for termination? He had no knowledge, you may not have had knowledge, Lisa may not have, okay, if you want to, I...
Well, hold on, I don't, I'll chair the meeting respectfully. Are you finished with Mike?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Is, are there any other questions, Councilmember Davis?
Of, of Mike, no, and thank you for coming out of your room.
Yes, ma'am.
And then...
Mayor, I see a hand raised by one of my directors who would like to speak, would you entertain her speaking?
I, I would, I would say this, it's eight fifty-three, if we can identify any and all directors or anyone who wants to speak, and council, I'd ask, obviously, for us, if we have any comments, we've got one resident, citizen request. The director would like to speak?
Yes.
I'd like to hear from her.
Yes.
Brianna So.
Please.
Good evening, council members and everyone present. My first day with the city was August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, I'm the community economic development director and the community redevelopment agency director for the city. Right before Christmas, I, my phone wouldn't hold a charge. I had inherited the phone from my predecessor, who I had no handover period with, because his last day was in July. And our IT director said to me, you know, here, I've got a phone for you, I'm like, great, something that will hold a charge from eight thirty to five, our hours. He had the phone ready for me, and I said, okay, so you can transfer the, I said, contacts, texts, and, and photos over, right? Because I've worked for a city where I've had to surrender text messages, so I know to ask those questions. And he said they cannot do text messages, and I was not informed to screenshot them. So, I trust the professional.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Anyone else, city manager?
No, sir.
Okay. Council, any other comments up here? I know we're going back and forth in some new topics, looking for consensus on, Dr. Shannon Roberts, I certainly would support her chance, to, to have a chance to speak, no issues. Dr. Roberts, please come forward, and thank you. Does anyone else want to speak for their first time? If you did not get a chance to speak, public participation is important, we did close it, but just checking to see, okay. Seeing none, we are, floor is yours.
Thank you so much, and I want to compliment council and staff in the community. Some of you may not know that I've served on city council here before, and I am a resident in the city, and I've had the great opportunity to work with many of you. I want to thank the citizens that came out and spoke their respective opinions, and in that vein, I wanted to listen to what was, was being said here about the audience as well as the council and, and Mr. Morley. And I, having worked with NASA and some other federal agencies, one of the things we do when there's a, a difference in opinion about executive performance is we have our executive coaching. In other words, if there was an issue about executive performance, we do allow for some opportunity to have specific corrective action, have a probationary period of time, have clear accountability for responding back for whatever corrections have been made. And I just wanted to suggest that as a consideration for council, that that's an opportunity we have before us. And I'd, I'd be glad, I've served in this capacity myself, I'd be glad to do that, and non-compensated, just because of our love for the city, and just to help, see if we couldn't bring ourselves together. You know, whatever the resolution of the outcome is, it would be real specific, it would be real accountable, and it would be a demonstration back to council, the staff, and the community about whatever corrections are needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. And, yes. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, I had a question in regards to the text messaging and all of that, because I, we heard from Brianna saying that she was not informed to capture messages. When, and Mike may be the one that needs to answer this.
Let's ask it.
Okay. When, what council meeting was it held, what, I had heard last, during our city council meeting last week, that the council had decided not to purchase that software system that would have captured SMS texting through, for the city. So I'm wondering, what year was that? Do you know, city manager?
Don't recall that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
I think it was stated that it probably predates all of us considerable time ago.
Okay, and this is my concern, and I understand, because technology moves really quickly. But in order for us to maintain public record, we have to stay on top of those things, and that is an administrative duty. So I understand, first off, I understand, as Michael was talking about the systems, governmental systems and large enterprise systems are different, but technology is really moving quickly. So that procedure should have been in place for all the staff members to know that per state law, we're supposed to capture those, those texts. And it's concerning to me, because how many other ones have we not been capturing? Because that's exactly what this, that discussion tells me. And that is a administrative function, somebody, somewhere should have had some policy in place, and especially as we move forward, because we do have a lot of things happening in technology right now. I know that Michael and IT are looking at the, the things that we need, but that is definitely a policy gap that needed to be brought together.
Thank you. I think in the short term, to protect data, when in doubt, don't throw out, if it was a phone that was not being passed to another employee, there should have been no urgency to erase the phone, if the port chart wouldn't charge, there's wireless chargers and other capabilities, you can't charge my phone either. But I have to use a wireless charger, every effort to do our best to protect that data. If there's nothing else...
I, I do have another question of...
City manager, I would like to ask Mike a, a question.
Of course.
Mr. Mike.
Okay, Mike's getting his workout.
Hi, Mike, thank you. You say, you said that you were informed by the former city clerk that we didn't have the capability of saving taxes, and that was a problem? Is that what I understood?
That's correct, and we had a couple of meetings about it to determine a path forward to fill the gap. Something as simple as do we just turn off texting altogether as a capability and remove it, to looking at archiving tools that are out there? And since then, I've been in contact over the last several months over with four different companies, they provide me proposals and designs on how to fulfill this requirement.
Okay, was the city manager involved in that meeting?
Absolutely. The city manager was involved with this, and we, we kept him informed and apprised of situation, and it was actually the city clerk that brought this to our attention, that there was a, a gap.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mike? Trying to help you out there. Okay, thank you all. I think we're, we're finished here, it is nine oh one PM. City Attorney, the, do you have any recommendations as far, I, I believe that it is clear, and I'm confident that we have, and I, I want to be, the, the agreement that was provided in the agenda and, and properly noticed of what we are discussing tonight, it's important that we go to eleven C, it's page five of eight, and kind of in the middle, it'll list a numerical set of reasons, and, and this is section C, which follows sort of the severance pay. What, what needs to be done to earn severance pay? There's some ten-year, first year, second year, third year, under no circumstances shall we not make that payment, but this is the section where I say it's a difficult job. Towards the middle of section C on the agreement, right when it ends, the ninth reason, which is not one today, but after number nine, there's a sentence there, kind of in the middle to the right, that says, "The city manager shall not be entitled to any severance pay." So that's the, the end of the sentence after it concludes. When I said, "We have a duty," I am referring to this, and as this agreement points to the charter, points to the code, certainly state law always has a place, this isn't a discretion, this isn't a recommendation. You elect us, we make observations, and I've stated the reasons and summarized them as well, to what I believe, I think, Mayor Portim Kellum, you stated some code as well, which I think that overlaps, two one oh one was the code you did. But just for the record, city attorney, if, if I, to make a motion, do I need to cite the specific codes or as presented in this document?
Mayor, the employment contract with the city manager, as, as you, I think you stated, you know, the manager serves at the pleasure of the city council, and the city council may terminate the agreement and the city manager's employment with the city at any time, for any reason and for no reason. And under the provisions of the, of the agreement, if the manager is terminated without cause, he would be entitled to, at this point, given it's beyond four years of service, a maximum of twenty weeks severance pay. If the manager, if the council, you know, were to terminate the city manager for cause, as you mentioned, there's an enumeration under subparagraph eleven C, setting forth the basis for cause. So if this, to the extent you're suggesting that the manager would be terminated for cause, then you would have to state the reason, and I think in your memo, you stated at least two sections here, eleven C three and eleven C four. You know, with, with that said, you know, it's councils, that, you know, that becomes a judgment call for council, and, you know, terminations for cause can be challenged. And, and the way the, the contract reads, the challenge would be to a court of competent jurisdiction, and, you know, the courts would then look at the reason and determine by the preponderance of the evidence, admissible evidence in court, whether or not that reason holds water, so to speak. If not, then the contract reads, the manager would be, then be deemed terminated without cause and would be entitled to severance. So that's like the general framework of the employment contract, so...
If we were to terminate with cause, would you draft a resolution, or what would be the, any agreement or documentation that you would put together that would summarize?
A resolution is not required.
Okay.
A motion would be the minimum that is, that is required. That's the way the contract reads, that's, there's, you know, there's no requirement that there be a written resolution.
I want to ensure that we are making the motion in a way that gives sufficient evidence to ensure that with, with cause was justified, and so for the record, I believe the basis for termination is for, due to the employment agreement provisions, sections eleven, C three, and C four, as well as section three A, city charter code violations, four oh two, in code section six thirty-three, code section two one oh one, and I believe Florida statutes, chapter one nineteen, one twelve, three thirteen. And so with that, I am looking for...
Mr. Mayor?
A motion. Yes?
I was just going to say, I have my hand up, I wanted to see if I can make a comment before we add a motion.
Okay.
I would like to just throw to the council, with all this going on and hearing the difference of opinion and outpourings of the staff, or excuse me, of the city residents, I like Dr. Shannon Roberts' example, or suggestion, and I would just like to throw that into the mix, that I would suggest that we can put on a probation period or whatever, that he is, you know, trained and retrained, or, I forgot how exactly you ordered it, I'm sorry, but I would just like to throw that it as an option for people to consider before we do his vote.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to terminate the city manager with cause, under the provisions of the employment agreement, city charter, city code, Florida law, under the documented failures, including neglect of duty, incompetence, reckless failure to perform responsibilities.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by Mayor Morrison, second by Councilmember Jackson, is there any further discussion? City Attorney?
I have nothing, no further comment at this time.
City Clerk?
To turn on my mic, I'm sorry, it's not turning on.
Four.
Against?
Motion to terminate for cause passes three to two, and with that, meeting adjourned. Oh, we need to enter them. Can I reset? We need to enter them.